County engineers, county engineer. I'm sorry, too bad. But I want to check off the road and see if they can check that out. There it is. Okay. Do you have a receipt? Since I don't have a copy. Yes.
Go ahead, yeah, okay.
There it is.
Yeah.
Hmm. It's a, well, I've got a lot of people.
Yeah, the meeting chair, nobody wants to come in. So we're not being that.
This is not the hurry you don't get. But it's something. Watch some people. You try to find it.
This looks so nice.
A body.
Yeah. She's cute. Not a little.
Yes.
First, I didn't do it.
Yeah.
Maybe because of the.
Yeah.
No.
It starts how we're like.
We're.
They can help. I saw it again.
I should also.
Maybe.
It was.
That way it's confused. Yeah. Where's the plan? Yeah, okay. That's fine.
If you can endorse it, we'll be back later. Right, just want your. Oh, yeah.
No, no.
Ready?
Call this meeting orders, Stewart City Council candidate agenda Monday, November eighth, two thousand twenty-one, six thirty PM. Council chambers called at order. Belton. Renzlo.
Here.
Glass. Kabba.
Here.
Askren.
Yes.
Agenda approval, consent agenda, approval of minutes of ten eleven, two thousand twenty-one, approval of financial statements as of ten thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, approval of bills as presented, approval of liquor license and outros, approval of liquor license. It's five day. Who's this? Who's this?
Yep. Does anybody know who that is?
No.
I was gonna ask you, that was.
I was thinking about for the same time perhaps.
All for the same time, oh, okay. Uh, when we.
Have you heard of this Aprils Bar Company?
We'll find out.
Yeah, find out.
The reason not to approve anyway, it's only a five day, right? So.
No, I was just curious to see.
No, I know, I'm just saying.
Just randomly giving out with license.
Yeah. Some evidence.
She says there is a wedding this weekend, so maybe that's what it is.
We'll find out.
Okay, and I want to move number seventeen up, and then the next one we'll do is fourteen, and then we'll go back to number four. So I need a motion for the agenda. Move my Kabba.
Second.
Say my Belton. How do you go? Belton?
Yes.
Renzlo?
Yes.
Kabba?
Yes.
Askren?
Yep.
Okay, fourteen property located at one one three North East Second Street. This time I open the public hearing. Did you receive any? Any comments or concerns from the general public? Close the public hearing. Twenty-one thirty-eight C.
We that did here and all this. Give it to the meal to me.
To the members of city council of Stewart City, Iowa, we are pleased to submit this bid and proposal to the commercial property, which is at one one three North East Second Street. We are vested interest in the city of Stewart and surrounding community as we have recently acquired the property at one one seven North East Second Street. We have visited the city of Stewart numerous times over the past years and continuously impressed with ongoing development within the community. We're excited to part with this city and community member as we continue to grow our business interest in Stewart, Iowa. Attached to the funding bid proposal, we will present the city council meeting Monday, November eighth, two thousand twenty-one, in order to answer any questions provided for the. Behalf of this bid proposal. Thank you for your opportunity. Sincerely.
Yeah, okay. Second pitch, three B.
Okay. And we had, originally, we had a minimum bid of five thousand. Per bid is five thousand one hundred and three dollars. Was there any?
That's all you.
Is there a proposal with that, though?
Business proposal.
New storefronts. Can partner with, lease the building, a restaurant, regular, had a sitting, bang, indoor outdoor patio. Minimum investment of a hundred thousand dollars. Marked value of the building would be worth a hundred and fifty thousand, yes. Timeline is spring of twenty twenty-three for completion.
You can tell you. Kind of.
You're close up there.
Right. And the bidder is also a registered architect, nine years of experience.
You need to, fourteen B, need a motion and a resolution for.
No, no.
Is that the only?
The only one.
Wait, second that.
Okay, notice by.
As presented.
Renzlo, second by Belton. How do you go? Belton?
Yes.
Renzlo?
Yes.
Kabba?
Yes.
Askren?
Yes.
You bet.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, good luck.
Yeah.
Um, I assume someone will not follow up or will follow up on the steps. Okay.
Steve, if you mind, uh, coming up and just telling everybody, give everybody a few minutes.
Little update?
Yeah.
Background and stuff.
Do you want me to tell my address? Do you guys do that?
No.
Not at this.
Okay.
Just plans and.
Um, my name is Sadie Cluffy. Uh, we recently acquired the Yoga Plus Building. I think most people know us. Um, my husband and I live in Badre, Iowa. Um, I'm an architect by background, but I stepped away from my full-time career to focus on our personal real estate investments, ignoring our business. Um, we own thirty-two unit apartment complex in Underwood, Iowa. Um, and we just have an interest in continuing to develop and, and invest in smaller communities. We're from rural Iowa originally, and we really want to see our smaller communities thrive. I worked as an architect in the Des Moines area for nine years and, uh, love the work that I got to do there, but I just see a huge opportunity to really, for us and our kind of passions, to put our energy back in smaller towns and partner with the people that we really resonate with, because that's where we grew up and we just want to see Iowa thrive, so. It's just our intent, and, um, we will be opening a business in our storefront in the spring, so more details will be coming on time, so.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Okay, seventeen, economic development director, Matt Hunt. Proposal.
Okay. First, we have the proposal from the Dudley family. Uh, they are prospective buyers of the Stewart True Value Hardware and Lumber at one called North Division Street, Stewart. They are requesting TIF funds to go towards fixing issues with lumberyard and expand to carry farm and home carrying. Uh, yes, sorry. Fix issues with lumberyard, expand to carry farm and home. They're going to carry fencing and other lawn and garden supplies and improve signage and up the inventory. They were requesting three hundred thousand. Uh, to be stretched over payments, to be stretched over seven years. And the commitment from developers, a minimum assessment agreement to increase by the amount from the development agreement. We're asking that we provide business plan, maintain employment, job, and retain sales tax revenue. And then, uh, they agree to pay the legal and, legal and administration expenses to be incurred. So asking for that to go to the bond attorney.
And we, we usually share these issues to the bond attorney. And then we'll look with the financial advisor to see what the availability of the farm building is still.
So pending that, okay, I guess I'd like, because I know you guys need to move forward, correct? I mean, it's kind of a, on this particular issue. We have two pending ones, Stewart Herald and Country Kitchen. Um, I guess, again, this goes back to what I said, as long as this works with, uh, CHIPS review, I'd like to see Dudley's move forward on a ten-year basis, if that's possible. I know you, uh, we've looked at some other things and, uh, Stewart Herald and Country Kitchen on five years. Um, and then the future, these future requests to come forward, go to C. And, and you can work them through there and then review through, uh, middle of the year or whatever. We kind of talked about what?
Uh, yeah, that goes into, uh, my economic development tip. And urban renewal request process. I'd like to update, or start to get a standard operating procedure, start to implement something here. Asking that TIF and urban renewal requests be collected and coordinated by me, or by, by, by the economic development department throughout the year with a deadline of May thirty-first. TIF and urban renewal requests to be evaluated from June first through June thirtieth. And then recommendations to be presented to the city council in a July meeting. And then council to evaluate and begin urban renewal process as available. And I would say that, uh, larger impactful projects may be considered outside this process, uh, such as Carl Chevrolet Womble Development, uh, heating, the DICA, et cetera.
Yeah.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see these three, because the, you're proposing these rules now, I'd like to see these three go to the bond council now.
Yes, get these processed.
Yeah, Stewart Herald Country Kitchen over five years. True, true value over ten, and then run the, run the cash flows by, uh, chip as Ash mentioned.
So, thanks to me, or is the rest of the council okay with that?
That's just my two cents.
Just send those three to bonding council?
Yes. Yeah, but to put a framework around them, two of the expectation, uh, five years for Stewart Herald Country Kitchen and ten for True Value.
So now, Country Kitchen and, uh, Stewart Herald have already been set for the council.
It was sent last month, correct?
We just need to see these one that he's presenting as well.
I'll make a motion.
Just to that.
I guess, I, I want to know, are we approving? I guess I'd like to vote on the framework as it relates to these.
But didn't we do the other two last month at that framework?
We didn't, uh, propose the cash flows, we just referred them. And this one has got more stress around timing, that's all I did. So, and it's a bigger deal with expansion versus routine maintenance type of, uh, changes. So that's just.
So here you just want to nail down the five years, basically, on the Stewart Herald.
Five years on the amounts they requested, ten years on the amount they requested, if they flow through the wet ashes.
Right.
Chip.
Okay.
That'd be.
So as long as that's in, that should, that'd be your motion.
Right.
Okay.
And. I just wrote it down, that's all.
And. That's what you move pursuant to that, right?
Okay.
Okay, so we do have a second?
I'll say.
Second, my Kabba, Aliva, Belton?
Yep.
Renzlo?
Yes.
Kabba?
Yes.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Then, uh, the next one, the thing with, uh, epic on the, uh, Womble. We'll start out, then, uh, Womble Phase One. Uh, some of the first meetings and planning for our housing development began twelve years ago, in twenty-ten. What was become the first phase of the Womble addition? The, uh, that addition began as ground that, uh, I'm sorry. What has become the first phase of the Womble addition began as ground that was purchased from the Womble estate that was evolved into thirty-two lots, which are all developed with homes. Womble Phase Two, uh, which consists of twenty-four lots in Phase Two, there is currently one lot with twenty, uh, Lot twenty-three is remaining. This lot has a gas main line even running through the front southeast portion of the lot, making it a little less desirable, as a home would need to be set back a little farther or deeper on the lot in comparison to the other homes. This Lot twenty-three, however, would make an adequate entrance to a potential future housing development. Just an idea, I'm not saying that has to go that way, it's just an idea. Uh, All Saints Edition. All Saints consist of thirty-nine lots. Twenty lots currently under contract, with six lots waiting on review. Uh, developers are being reviewed. So their, the builders have submitted criteria forms and. Uh, Savannah Homes has twelve lots. Orton Homes is holding five lots, and then there's JBR Contracting holding one lot. JBR Contracting is in the process of trying to bring two more lots. And then there's Rose Development, who has recently submitted purchase agreements for four lots. And All Saints Church is holding two lots. That potentially leaves thirteen lots available at thirty-nine. So, now Phase Four, I believe this is the time this comes to ask the city council and C to work on discussion with Forrest and Meester and Kim about the potential locations of, of future Phase Four.
Matt, I've talked about this before, but when we go to do Phase Four, I would really like to make sure that Jim is involved, as I've had some conversations with him, and it sounds like we're gonna have some major sewer development when we do Phase Four, so he needs to be in the middle of all that discussion to make sure that wherever we put it, we can, the sewers can hold it.
I would agree.
Are there capacity issues?
I believe there will be.
Potentially with the Santry sewer going down Harlan.
Yes.
That, Harlan Street is about max now.
So, I just, I would like to make sure that Jim is included in all of those conversations.
So that's, if you do a study with CED or whatever, then you would consider that in that study?
Yes.
And include the utility board.
Okay, so we're gonna ask the, uh, public board, the utility board, and CED and the city council be involved in meetings for location, for a future possible location.
I'd like to see that.
Do you have a site, uh? I mean, like, what cost us would be a site?
Uh, for looking at a couple sites, um, you're, you're looking at like six, seven thousand dollars.
To do the evaluation that would cover the sewer and infrastructure calls.
Yeah, basically. Do some layouts, you know, what would those layouts look like? What would be the cost for? And.
Where does it subdivision? Where is? It's forward. Would, nobody's, nobody knows where it's at yet, nobody's decided, nobody's. Nobody's raised their hand, say it, there's no plans.
You should also have that guy, uh, Ted, Ted Robe should be involved in that as well. Just to determine some marketability and feasibility.
Didn't Warren say there was four particular areas that they were kind of looking at at our last meeting?
Possibly.
Looking at a couple sites is one thing, looking at.
No, that's why I'm asking, because Warren said there were four potential sites that they were looking at at last meeting.
There's four potential sites that CED would like to bring up as a suggestion.
Okay.
What's that?
I said there's four sites that CED would like to bring up as a suggestion.
Well.
So are we looking at four? Are we looking at higher? I mean, are we incurring costs for Forrest for four or two?
I think a couple is reasonable enough.
No, I mean, I, that's why I'm asking, because I don't.
I mean, it's, to me, this is just a study, right?
Just a study, so.
We gotta look at, you know, I mean, the point of this was to put money back into core infrastructure from that new development, and we've done that, sewer landings and stuff. But, uh, I mean, I get your point about no lots, or fewer lots left, so we could need to study it.
And Kristen, when she was at your position, she did a study on the economic development, on having utilities and not, you know, Phase Two is in, Phase Three is in our electric district. That's a big potential right there for electric.
We'll be able to size the cost of where that would go, whether it's water or electric, right?
Whereas my main concern is, are we looking at four or are we doing two?
I, I mean, to me. A couple is reasonable.
Narrowed down, too.
Yeah, a couple is reasonable to me.
So, all right.
I mean, I'd, I'd make a motion to, but I mean, having a study group versus having thirty people, that is one thing, so, I mean, I, to me, I think having Forrest, Jim, you and CED to start works fine, and then you can figure it from there.
And then utility, I mean.
I don't even think, what, I mean, utility doesn't need to be involved yet, until the council would be, right? I mean, to me, this is a city fund.
More married.
That's what I'm saying. After you get through some site discussions, then have a council member utilities or something, but.
I'm not saying like the whole board, but maybe, uh, Howie can chime in.
Okay, I mean, but I'm just thinking, where we have issues, you know, a lot of that going on anyway, so.
What's that on, Brian?
Just committing chaos.
Yeah.
So.
We do.
Anyway.
So.
Okay, we have a motion.
So I guess.
To, uh.
Pull any one.
Pull up.
Stick your layer in.
We have a motion that Belton to approve.
Up to seven thousand, two sites.
Seven thousand for engineering, Scotty, on a site review.
And I covered two sites.
Move my Belton, I have a second.
I'll second it.
So, my Kabba, Aliva, Belton?
Yeah.
Renzlo?
Yeah.
Kabba?
Yes.
Askren?
Yep.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, more. I'll make sure.
Anything else here?
Uh, then a reminder, uh, we're gonna have a notice of a public meeting for the residents along North East Second regarding St. Francis School sidewalk. That's gonna be at six thirty.
Is that Tuesday?
Yes, Tuesday, November sixth.
So that's that same grant Dexter got, and they were able to put that in, so again, that's a great thing we've got to, uh, extend sidewalk from school to school.
Okay, yeah, so the, uh, two council members that are a part of that committee have been informed, and, uh, notices were mailed out to the residents along North East Second.
And there couldn't be any, anything done this year on that?
No. It, it has to be, the bid letting has to go through the DOT, so it can't be a locally with bid project, it has to go through, so it's next spring bidding.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Matt, one other thing, um, seventeen B, Mike Johnson had asked that we review that flight housing program, Ellen Lyslash. So the only, the only item, a rule that seemed, that like needed to go is the one thing, only people I wish for contract.
Hold on, I thought we were waiting on Dan Oss's comments.
There, there's no update, I haven't heard anything from the attorneys, it was submitted to the attorneys and.
Right, but they gave it the feedback on that call, right? You were on the same call.
Yeah.
I thought we were gonna see something in writing.
That's fine.
I don't have anything in writing.
No, I'm just asking, because I've been.
Yeah, and, I mean, the feedback to the, to us was, we can set that parameter, those rules here relative to what we want that to be, the formal house.
The, so I want that in writing, so. So that's, I didn't receive anything in writing for those.
The next council meeting.
Oh, she's council, okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, let me start with number four, seventy, plot survey, John Henderson.
You should have copies of the two, uh, survey bids, um, recommendation of the cemetery. Forward with the bid from Snyder Engineering to plot and pin the east section of North Oak Grove Cemetery.
Was this, did this go to the whole committee?
To the cemetery committee?
Yes.
We've been talking about it for months.
Well, hang on. I got a, I got a call today, and, uh, from somebody on the committee, and they said they were not informed of this. Nobody has seen this. Three other members.
They should have a, they should have copies of it.
We've had copies, it's in our minutes that we've been discussing for three months.
They were very adamant that they did not get copies of it. Okay. That's, I'm just reporting on what I.
And.
And let me finish, please, please, okay? They made the comment that they would like to have these copies given to them, I think they said they have the meeting tomorrow.
They were given for them, but that's fine.
I'm, I'm just reporting.
Yeah, I'm just telling you facts.
Okay, and I understand, you know, I'm, I wasn't at your meeting, I don't have your minutes, I don't have anything like that, but I, I got a call, and three people were very adamant that they were not informed of this, so.
How many?
Three.
Because I had this conversation with Alberta and Mary Pease when we went and accepted the Guthrie County grant.
So the, the, the thinking question was, they understand that Jim was going to get bids, but the bids were not presented to them.
I can send you our minutes, because we've been talking about it for, well, when did we get the first?
What do you want to do?
Well, they, they had asked me, they had asked me if you could get that at their, at their next meeting, and then, I don't know, give you minutes.
That's fine, while the meeting, while.
Okay, so, and I think, I think we have a meeting on Wednesday.
That's fine.
That's, that's all they asked me to do.
This is a set pins for.
Step plot and pin the east part of the North Oak Grove Cemetery that is undeveloped at this time.
The other bid was what, ten thousand or something?
Eleven thousand, eleven thousand.
So you got eighteen hundred and eleven thousand.
That's correct.
That's not.
No.
Isn't that what it says?
There's an estimate fee. They'll probably leave an estimate.
Yeah.
Estimated fee.
With an estimated fee of.
What's the, what's the hourly rate?
That is kind of big.
I'm not sure.
Come back. The last sheet is the hourly rate.
So there's a lot of links on there, and I'm just saying, I don't know which rate they're looking at, I mean, it's, it's got a lot of rates on there.
So is this only one, there's one, five, one, two?
Snyder, Snyder and B and K. Correct.
So almost ten percent of the other.
Correct.
Ten, five.
I'm just reporting what they asked, and they asked, uh, if, if I would bring that up to you.
Take one.
You know, I'm.
What is the difference between these?
We're, we're, um, we're pinning every, every grave site, they're pinning just the blocks.
And that's how I asked your guys to do it, was in blocks of two.
So that's fine, I'm, Snyder's, what does it do for eighteen hundred dollars?
No, I understand, I'm just trying, I understand what I got.
Yeah, but that's, that's the difference.
It doesn't, we, this comment is, it's a little vague, so you know how that goes, it's a little big.
Aren't we asking for this because we are running out of plots, and there are.
No, we're just look, we're just looking to utilize.
You're just gonna table it for a month.
No, I'm not saying that.
We're just doing this to, to utilize available space.
Right.
Before we have to resort to. Yes.
North Cemetery in East End.
Correct, east side, yes. Yeah.
We got another meeting coming up Wednesday.
That's fine.
You know, if you got a meeting tomorrow.
We have a meeting on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah. If, if, if you take it to them tomorrow, it's a meeting.
That's fine.
It'll be done, I'm just going off what I was told, I'm not saying the guys didn't give it to them.
They have it, so. That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna staple this till Wednesday, Karen?
Yeah.
Okay. And five, five, we're just, uh, sending this to Beverly Wild, Andy can work with her, they've been in contact. Just make contact with her.
Why did this blow up again?
Andy.
You don't want to hear.
Yeah, I mean, weren't we supposed to get something from you this meeting?
I just have a. And he wasn't able to get appraisal done, he reached out to the guy that Steve Provo recommended, and he didn't want to pay the two thousand dollar fee, so he got hold of me, and so I'll basically probably reach out to the bank or the banks I'm gonna work with and have them do an evaluation, as sort of an assessment, and go that route, so.
Because the reason I'm asking. And stuff that you were saying, you know, it's like a fine for one day, and then a thousand dollar day after that?
Hundred.
You know, so right now, and that was supposed to be done by the last meeting, so we're looking at at least thirty thousand dollars right now, so, I mean.
That's ridiculous.
That, that's why I was bringing up at the last meeting, what, what do we do, are we going to, I mean, we're evidently going to let that work with that, or?
No, I, it was all table, Mike, so. It, I talked to Beverly, we put it on hold, Andy was coming up with a proposal, and that's what we're doing. He's, he's trying to get a bid.
Why was it, why was it, why did he get, why did you go after him again? And he told us, and we gave him extensions.
For four.
And he's been working on it.
Four years.
So what, he's been.
So what, he's been working on, he didn't have the money.
But.
You're being, you're, you know what you're being, Dick.
It's, it's in, it's Beverly and Andy's hand now.
Yeah, okay.
It's in Beverly and Andy's hand now.
So, my concern on that, I'm, I'm glad you're working with her.
Sure.
Is that if we're, if we're sending out. And stuff, are we going to be that lenient on other people that get fines, uh, in this city too? Are we setting a precedence here and saying, well, you know, and I'm not, I'm not picking on you, it's just, this is what happened, right? This is just what happened, is, are we gonna say, well, we're gonna table it, and Bev's gonna handle it, and they got another thirty days? I mean, I, I hope he gets something worked out pretty soon.
My, my reasoning question is why, why the fine was even set.
We'll load them all up again.
Yeah, that, you know, that's, I was trying to get that question answered, you know, it's like, you send a letter. You usually don't send a letter unless you're gonna do something, you know, that's, that's where I've always worked at it.
Well, between, between the last meeting, and now, I got a letter after, two days after the last meeting, that said I had three and a half weeks to close this deal, had four to be able to down our property, that was a low in rates for me, I thought. So, I don't know if anybody's done any transactions like that, but try, try to go buy a house in a month, maybe that happened, yeah, and I was.
Why was the second letter set, out of curiosity, I thought we agreed at the last council meeting that we were gonna wait and let him work it out.
Beverly gave him a timeline to have a purchase agreement.
Beverly isn't the one who gives timelines, his counsel gives the timeline.
It is now, it's in the attorney's hands. So at this point, Andy, you, see if you can get an appraisal, work with Lance, and get back with Beverly, you have her contact. Okay, thank you. Okay, six, Citizens Advisory Committee.
Alright, so y'all got your, uh, proposed guidelines for setting up a Citizens Action Committee? I know we had a, uh, incident come up, uh, here recently, and, uh, when I talked to Ash, it was, uh, I asked what kind of guidelines do we have, uh, to set up committees on, and what they can do, and we didn't have anything, so that's, that's why this comes about. It's not particular to any particular committee, but any Citizens Advisory Committee that may be set up, Parks and Rec, uh, if you set somebody up to have, uh, a, a committee for Good Egg Days, just, uh, on what they can do. If you want me to read the guidelines, you all got them? Is there any questions about them, or?
I'd like you to read them.
Okay. Purpose is to define a process for the appointment of a Citizens Advisory Committee, uh, which, uh, an example would be Cemetery, Parks and Rec, etc. Citizens and Advisory Committee, a committee appointed by the State City Council for the purpose of recommendations to the council. Citizens wishing to be on a Citizens Advisory Committee must be eighteen years old. Uh, Citizens Advisory Committee will consist of three and not more than five non-city employed residents. Sorry, I. That's alright, you can, you can pick that. An active council member will not hold a position on the, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee. An ongoing Citizens Advisory Committee shall elect a president and a secretary, be run under our virtual order. The ongoing, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee will keep a record of its proceedings, at no point will the Citizens Advisory Committee have any authority to enter into any contracts or commit city funds without approval of the council. Any rules and regulations drafted by the Citizens Advisory Committee shall be presented to the council for review prior to implementation.
As a council, the council as a whole?
Yeah, it's, it's, it, it would have to be brought here, and a majority of the council would have to approve, uh, any contracts, any, uh, rules and regulations.
Okay, so it's not a one council, uh, one department that.
No.
There's no voting by them, right?
Right. Uh, it, it says non-employed city, non-city employed residents, and, and that means we're gonna trust our citizens if we, if we appoint them to this, to bring that information to us, and then, as usual, it should be up to the council to decide if, if any action's gonna be taken or not. On that.
So you're saying that the cemetery board that's been set up for.
It's not a board, it's committee.
Well, I have always been told a board, whatever it is.
No, I'm just saying that a board is something that's putting the code, and it's.
That's fine, so when I was appointed cemetery, I went to my first meeting, and I was told, you're gonna be the secretary, you're gonna take the notes. Jim Anderson's the president because he's the Public Works Director, I, I'm just telling you what I was.
No, you're fine, I'm listening.
And so for the last two years, I've been taking notes as a secretary, and I vote with the rest of them, we make a group decision, so now you're saying that whoever takes that position now, they just don't have a vote.
Right, you don't.
Because then you only have four votes, which you can't have.
A council member's not even supposed to be on the committee, a council member is not even supposed to be on the committee.
But isn't, Dick, is not what you appointed him to?
And, and Jim could be on, Jim could be at the committee meetings, and he can make, uh, recommendations, but he has no vote, and, and the committee doesn't have to take and accept his, or his, uh, recommendations.
So why after all these years, has it changed?
Cause we've always had.
And, and, and the other thing is.
I'm just asking, cause Jim's always been the president, and the council person.
Yeah, the other thing is, is the mayor doesn't appoint committees, the council appoints the committees.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Dick.
What?
So, you appoint all these.
I'm sorry.
Different things, like Brian's finance, whatever, you appointed me to cemetery, and whoever it was before me.
Yeah.
Had the same job duties, did the secretary, did all that, Jim's always been the president, I don't understand why, after all these years.
So how does that conflict with that?
Okay, so.
So you got a council member.
Well, then is it a conflict?
So, well, okay, so here's the thing, okay, I'm the street liaison, okay? Um, I'm sure we could set up a committee probably tonight, and then I could tell, you know, be over the streets a little bit more than anything, you know? But you're a liaison, and being a council member, in my view, when you're sitting on there, you're deciding on stuff that's going to be brought to the council anyway, you shouldn't be deciding stuff in the meeting prior to coming to the council.
We make recommendations, and then Jim runs the council.
Well, did you not hire somebody to spray the cemetery?
That was a committee decision, and.
How many on the committee made that decision?
Uh, it was a, it was put in for sealed bid, or it was put in for bid.
How many approved?
I have to look at the minutes.
And had that person start spraying.
At, at least four of us.
No, I can tell you.
At least four of us, I have the minutes.
Great, you, Jim, and one other citizen. Three.
I can look at the minutes, I have them at home.
Excellent, look at one.
But I can almost guarantee you, we just accepted the lowest bid like we always do.
We don't always accept the lowest bid.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what they decided.
I, I mean, I know that, but that's.
That's why you don't need to be on a committee, if you think that's the way it goes, lowest bid.
Yeah, that's enough.
Yeah, and, and the point is, 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 uh, having, not having a council member on there is, is, uh, they, I believe there's, there can be undue influence on that committee.
So now you're, you're wanting to set this up, you're kicking Jim off the cemetery board, who does most of the maintenance, and you're kicking the council person off, so then.
So then you have a citizens advisory.
After how many years, how many years has it been like this?
Doesn't make any difference, it was a hundred years, that's the way it is now.
I just don't understand why now.
Things change.
I believe it's in response to the last, last, uh, thing where we had a committee approve, approve funds to be expended and enter into a contract without city council approval.
Then, can you go back and tell me how many years have they went ahead and had sweaters sprayed without approval?
So, so what you're saying is, this is the way it's always been done?
Can you go back and look at minutes for how many years? I don't know, that's what I was told.
That is the worst excuse, that is the.
Wanted to tell you, that's what I was told.
I understand that, but that doesn't mean it's right, to say.
I'm not saying it's right, I'm just saying, Dick.
We've always done this. Yes.
So what's where we're going, is the guidelines of the Iowa League of Cities says that there, there is no, no, no computers on citizen committees. There's no, it, it, was it put paid employees, or was it put department heads?
They just said city employees.
City employees, okay, no city employees on there, but they could be on there, the city employee could be on there and make recommendations, but the committee doesn't have to go by their guidelines and their recommendations.
And, and generally, they wouldn't get a vote, this was, again, when I said, no sit. Go ahead.
Sorry.
So you're trying to micromanage what the cemetery.
I'm trying to compare it to something like council.
This is ridiculous.
No, it's not micromanaging.
I can understand in general, but to eliminate the cemetery committee is ridiculous.
What's that? There are council members on committees.
Council members can be on committees on a council committee, similar to the A Park Committee, we have two council members, uh, we had Forrest, uh, we had Snyder, whoever else was on, that's a council committee, that's a council committee, yes, and that's, that's done. A Citizens Advisory Committee is, is a, is a committee of citizens, that's what it is, citizens.
Who appoints the citizens committee?
Um, well.
The council does.
We.
Who appoints the council committee?
Uh, shouldn't be Dick.
No, 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 the only, according to the Iowa's League of Cities, the only Dick appoints is, is the mayor pro temp, and that's what it says, now, now, that's what they told me today.
So Dick, you don't have to appoint anything anymore?
Well, hopefully, who, who appoints the council committee, that's still the question.
The council, the council does.
Okay, so then who appoints the citizens committee? I'm just asking.
It'd be the council.
Okay, so then, what's the difference between the two? I just want, I'm trying to understand this, so the council's gonna appoint both?
You can't, you can't appoint one cit, one council member to go to and be on a committee, a citizens committee, and have a vote, they can, they do not have a vote, matter of fact, they're not even supposed to be on the committee.
Okay, so the council appoints a Citizens Advisory Committee over here, and a council.
That votes on recommendations, to bring to that.
Makes recommendations.
Yeah, and, but they vote, they have their meetings, they have a vote, generally.
Can they obligate the city financially?
No. Can the, can the council committee do that?
No, nobody should be able to.
Right, nobody can unless you bring it to, unless you bring it to the council.
Absolutely.
But I appoint somebody from the council to each of these positions.
So then how does this?
According to, according to me, you don't.
According, according to the Iowa City League, League of Cities, all you can, all you, um, appoint is the mayor pro temp, according to them, call them if you don't believe.
It's right in our code.
Call them if you don't believe.
So what, what is the, I still don't understand the difference between, so tell me, tell me what the citizens advisory, what's it gonna do versus the.
You appoint the citizen, you didn't.
We appoint, they make recommendations to the, they're similar to a council.
Right.
Right?
You appoint her to this committee, and you didn't know what you're appointing, you didn't know what the rules were to the committee, or something.
Just like he's done for years past.
Yeah, whatever you want to be. I mean, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a committee, and it's going to, we wanna get our, uh, citizen involved, which I believe we should, we have the Citizens Advisory Committee, they can do anything, Parks and Rec, uh, something with the pool, who knows, by Good Egg Days, I said that, you know? That's stuff that, why, why would, as a council person, you wanna take up valuable time, have to sit on this committee, you know, I mean, it's okay if you do, but it should be up to that committee, that citizens committee, to have the vote and bring it in, you know?
Yeah, there's. And discuss it and read it to us. There is no council member should be on the citizens committee.
So that's, that's why I brought it up, especially after we had one, uh, committee that.
No, I get the, I get the, I get the financial obligation, the, the council to, financial deal, I get that, but I just don't.
It's not like we would be the first city to have rules, these, these are not rules, but, you know, I went and looked up other cities that, you know, you have to apply to be on a committee.
So if you're in charge, you're the only person that's gonna appoint these, I'm just asking you this, so who, you're gonna have citizens, you're gonna have Parks and Rec be on.
Those are examples, those are just examples, okay?
Alright, so then what would a council committee be, what would they look at?
So you can look at the A Park.
They can do this, White, White Paul Road out here.
The sidewalk committee.
The sidewalk, yeah.
There's no, uh, there's no citizens on, well, we got residents.
I mean, you're gonna.
We're gonna meet with the residents.
You're gonna meet with them, but the sidewalk committee was Mr. Kaba and myself, and Forrest, and Matt, and the mayor, and Ash.
Okay.
And Jim.
I'm slow.
So that's, that would be a council, that would be a council.
So, Dick, can we table this, and then can we check with legal counsel to see?
No, this is legal counsel.
You're not an attorney.
Yeah. I know you're not either, you haven't passed the bar, have you?
I'm sorry.
But, yeah. I'm sorry, you are sorry.
Dick.
Nothing.
What, what legal counsel questions is there in it? Just, I mean, what is it? It's just, it's just to set a guidelines to, to live by, you know, or to run a committee by.
Have you talked to any citizens that even wanna be on this?
On what, these are guidelines, we're not setting one up. These are guidelines.
He's already got a cemetery in his set up.
He's wanting to disable the whole cemetery committee.
No, no, just you and Jim.
No, it's not, no.
Oh, just me and Jim.
Just you and Jim, hey, hey.
It's not even that, this is rule, it, there's nothing specific about any cemetery in there, this is any committee, I don't know why this is so hard for people to understand, these are just suggestions, guidelines for when you pick the committee, so that the people on that committee know what they're allowed to do, and not do.
The responsibility of both of these committees is to bring back information to the council.
Yes, and we don't have anything in writing about this nearly yet, but what is wrong with putting this in writing?
There's no way of putting it in writing, I'm telling you, the role of both of them is the same, to bring back information to share with the council.
Right, but sometimes that doesn't happen, that's, we're just putting it in writing so everybody knows, instead of flying by the seat of our pants.
Can I say something?
Put the microphone, please.
Yep.
Yep. Sorry.
Gotta follow the rules, Mark.
It's fine, it's fine, so, when the Parks and Rec came together five, six, seven years ago, we had a whole group of thirty plus, we all met in the library, they dwemble down, we ended up, we kept a committee, if I remember right, but nobody on the council could be on it. That was told to us, we, and if we raised any money, it could not go through the city, because it was our committee, am I right, Dick?
Yes.
Committee, it was a committee, so we did that, we followed our rules, we did everything, and the city council was not involved. They were not, and so we did our own thing, and now it's kinda just me doing the hand page, but that's what it was five or six years ago.
Something happened with the whole house, and the pool, same thing happened, we had a committee.
And they didn't make any financial decisions, they didn't.
No.
No, we, we raised, we raised our own money.
They raised their own money, so.
We have our own money to do with whatever we want to, it's just set in a savings account at the First State Bank, nothing's been done with it, it's just been set in there, and the pot can.
You should've told Ash.
Did you have a budget?
No, all.
The cemetery has a budget.
All of our goal was to do was to raise money for new picnic tables.
But you couldn't make recommendations on how to spend the Parks and Rec budget?
Yes, we could do whatever we wanted to, it was like our money, our finances.
It's not that money, the city's money, the city's parks and rec, you guys couldn't come up here and say, we wanna purchase this.
They could have, they brought it to us.
Well, we can, we can, but we don't want to, example, when the city raised forty-two thousand dollars to, or when they bought that equipment, that was the city's money, they didn't ask us to do anything towards it, but, you know, we, we could, we could do whatever, but if we said, hey, we wanna buy ten picnic tables, I would bring it to the city council, absolutely.
So is, is the simple answer to ask Ash to collect some information off of these types of committees, from the Iowa League of Cities, not spend any money on legal fees, and to come back with what these are, I mean, can you, I'm assuming there's more behind this, this is your summary?
Right.
Okay, so, are there?
I mean, we could go as far as to have an application process set up, I've seen that, you know?
We tried that, and it's just.
I, I understand that, this is just so the council knows, and anybody that wants to be on these committees know what, what their goal is.
And there's nothing wrong with that.
I know, I just, I, I don't understand it. I mean, I'd like to be on the street committee where I could do my stuff, but I'm responsible, you know, I'm a liaison, that's, that's what I am.
But you also understand, in January, it's probably gonna change, right?
Good. What's gonna change?
It could possibly.
Who'll point to?
Who, who I appoint on the Parks and Rec and Sewer.
Oh, I didn't think you did that, Dick.
Yes, I did.
Oh, I didn't think you did that.
I don't think that changes, I guess, to me.
What?
I mean, these groups that you've appointed for.
Well, no, that's, that's not what.
You're talking about these.
Talking about the people, so, if three people here wanted to be on the Parks and Rec committee, okay, they could come up here and say, hey, we'd like to be on the Parks and Rec committee, or they contact Dick, and Dick says, these street people would like to be on that, okay, there, here's your, here's your regulations, here's what you follow, it's.
I, I think I got you, Mike, now, let me, let me try to put it in a different way, I think what Mike is trying to do with this proposal is to create what's called citizen committee, similar to what Paul is saying, the group of citizens would like to be in charge of looking out for the parks and swimming pool, you can form it on their own, come to us, to kinda prove that to them, that they will be working with us. I think, am I right, this is what you have in mind?
Yeah, that's pretty simple.
Okay, and I, let me put it in a different way, I think. Okay, and I let me put it in a different way. I think a committee like Park Pass has, they don't really get the money or spend it with our approval, because we wanna work this way. It has to be their own thing that they do, and make it probably with him who created that. But if you, if they cannot bring the money here and spend it from here, I mean by the city, we have, the council has to be involved. The council has to say what they need.
Right.
But, so we have to separate the two committees. One, as a concerned citizen, they raise money on their own, from the rez or stuff like that. They come to us, tell us what they do, and given the blessing, without having to deal with their money, that's fine. Another group that they would like to bring that money to the ci, city. Absolutely.
Right, and that's why it says they can't commit city funds.
Exactly. So I think that's, that explain what is after, is just a citizen committee.
Right.
Right.
You know, okay, that I, I can see that just a citizen.
I, I understand the word citizen in that, might have put some people off, but.
Which is fine, sometimes we cut out.
I don't understand it, you know?
So it's a citizen committee more than the committees that we have, like.
And like Christine is doing already, keep a record of what you're doing.
Yeah.
You know, because.
No, there's no council members allowed on the citizens committee.
Well, she's been, I know, she's, but she's been taken, right?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, they'll have to get someone else.
But their committee is not a citizen committee. That's committee appointed by council.
No.
No?
The, the, the cemetery committee is the citizens committee.
So who put Alberta and Mary T's on the, uh?
So it's not asking, how?
On the committee? How did they get on, like, how did those people make it on the cemetery committee?
So, when I was appointed liaison of the streets, I didn't think that I was going to be the boss of the streets. I don't wanna be the boss of the streets. I wanna leave that up to Jim and, and Cory and whoever does. I don't need to be that fault. If they have questions, or if I have questions, that should come through me, okay? I don't know.
They should bring it through the council.
Right.
The whole council.
Right. Having, having a council member on that citizens advisory committee, if you're voting on it, you're voting on stuff that has to be brought to the council anyway, you know? So that folks shouldn't be there. That folks should be the, the citizens voting on that, and then they bring it to the council, and then as a whole, you're doing it as a whole council.
Let's just spitball this. Let's say there's a streets committee, just like the cemetery committee, there's a streets committee. Are you on that? Let's say they determine which roads in town are the worst, need to be repaired. They help Jim evaluate that, whatever, I don't know. So are you on that committee, or how do you represent that? Cause you're a, I'm asking, yeah.
No, I'm not gonna be on that.
Okay, so then what is your role between the committee and when, when he says?
There is no role for the council.
Okay, so what role do you play on the streets? Where does that person?
As far as like being a liaison.
Yes, yes. If Jim has something to ask about the council, from the council, if we need something from the council, he goes and talks to Mike about it. And then Mike brings it in to the council, or Jim can bring it in to the council.
Or they can present it, or if he has a question and, and it's something that I can answer, but I don't wanna be on that committee and try to steer it.
It's just like it has been for fifty years. You got a street person, you got a, and that person's second on sewers. You got a cemetery person, and that person's secretary, or second on parks. You know, that's, that's, it's pretty simple with that part of it. And they, they weren't in charge of it. It wasn't their duty to be in charge of crack whip and everything else. They were out there, if there's a problem, take it to them, let them discuss it with the council, or you come in and Mike will set up a meeting with the council, whatever.
So basically, every, every, uh, point that you appoint, every person you appoint for each subject would be a citizens committee.
No, Dick don't appoint citizens committees.
No.
So why does he make, why does he make appointments?
Okay, hold on, let me finish here, okay? That's why Ash is the streets. Streets, cemetery, parks, rec, finance, these should all be, if there's a committee, then, and the council member's not on the committee, right? No employee, no council member on the committee, then what is his appointment of that person? What is their role? And I'm fine with him not being on it, but I've tried to delineate between the difference between, you know, what this person does that he appoints in the.
They should take, amongst them, they pick their own, they pick their president, or whatever they wanna do, however they wanna do that, they wanna, they pick their representative of the committee, and that committee either, um, talk, that committee brings everything to the council. As far as the citizens committee.
So if they had a question on the streets and they came to me, I try my best to answer it, right? I'm a liaison, okay? But I don't want to tell them what to do, or try to direct them on what to do, or try to influence, uh, not influence, but, I think just being there, there's, there may be that, uh, air of, oh, you know, but they're on the council, you know, there, it's, you know? And it may, it may not happen, I don't know, okay? I don't know. But I, I never once thought, when Dick said, Mike, you're on streets, I have to be boom, right there, up in, up in Jim's face, you know? Get this fixed, do this, you know, do that, you know? I, I guess, I never thought that.
When I was appointed to cemetery, I got a call and said, we're having a meeting on this date, and I showed up, and Mike Johnson says to me, you're the secretary, that's what the council person who is always appointed over the cemetery does. So please take notes, and that's what I do. I take notes, and we have discussions, and there's five of us. It's always been Mike and Alberta and Mary and Jim, and then the council person. And when a recommendation needs to be made, Jim comes, puts it on the agenda, and comes up here and says, this is what the cemetery recommends, just like we did with the mowing bits. You all had the mowing bits, Jim said, here's everybody's bit. This is what we recommend.
And I guess.
And it, I guess I'm just, I'm, I see the point of a citizens advisor, I mean, I'm all for it, but when it, I just think that the cemetery has always just been different, and it's gonna be in January, you know, if he puts me liaison over sewer, and you get put on cemetery, you're gonna have the same role. You're gonna take notes as secretary, and you're gonna go to those meetings, and you're gonna.
Not committee meetings, not committee meetings.
I'm sorry, I was speaking.
I don't care whether you are or not, not committee meetings.
Dick.
This is getting ridiculous. I can, trying to speak, and he's screaming at me, and it's, see, that is unacceptable.
All right, so, so can you let Christine?
Okay, so I'm confused on why the cemetery is, I, I just, it's always been that way. It's, you've always, I mean, they, things have worked this way for so long. I, I got, I'm just confused. And I mean, come January, I'm probably not even gonna be on the cemetery committee. It's gonna be somebody else, and they're gonna start taking notes, and we have meetings every, every second Tuesday of the month, and we decide on, you know, whether, you know, putting specs together for, Jim does the specs for the mowing, or the spraying, or this, maybe we've been talking about that, we're talking about different programs, and we've gotten grants for gates, and we've done all these things, and I just don't understand why now, so cemetery is getting singled out.
It's, but you're.
Well, I mean, I can tell you what's coming.
It's definitely not.
No, I mean, it's not, it's been the mowing and the spraying separation is every.
Hold on.
Right, and we're discussing that.
Okay, but, but the acceptance of a bid that obligated the city financially in a committee setting is unacceptable by any stretch, and frankly, probably illegal at some level. I'm not an attorney, so I don't know.
Right.
Well, I'm not done, so that's the first thing that's come up, so that's probably a concern, and then, um, just like we referred, these last two development agreements, okay? So, I volunteered my time to, to follow up for Country Kitchen and to follow up for Stuart Herald, and frankly, I'd like to have an hour of my life back, what I did, so I volunteered. I heard something, and he said he doesn't have this information, or he wants to rewrite it. Evidently, I have to go get it and write it.
Right, which is, it's mine. I'm just, I'm trying to figure this out.
No, it's not. It's not, because I think the council members have way too much involvement, is what I'm getting at, and are relied on way too much for every type of day-to-day thing. That's what I get.
Right, but do you think I wanna spend every second Tuesday of the month going and?
No, that's what, I'm with you.
I'm volunteering my time.
There you go.
Yeah.
And to, to make sure that this comes.
So did you say that a city employee shouldn't be on that?
Correct. And that's, that is from the Iowa League of Cities, okay? That is from the Iowa League of Cities.
Just don't wanna blindside.
Well, okay, so.
I don't know what I'm saying, is, um, Jim, you know, all of a sudden said, hey, we come up with this and this, because he's very involved with the sewer.
Okay, so, so, so.
Let's think at this time, review it, get information.
Well, I, I think that, I think there's enough information there to make a phone call in the morning, talk to the, um, League of Cities, Iowa League of Cities, talk to them and ask them what it is, and you got it right there. I mean, if you don't believe what, what Mike and I are telling you, and otherwise, otherwise, it should end right here, boom, it's done.
So.
Change, change whatever. There seems to be some concern that, oh, somebody's gonna get blindsided.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't understand this, because if, if that committee, say, since we're talking about cemetery, say cemetery, and they have a recommendation they don't know, Christina's liaison, they can come and talk to her. They have to bring it to the council before they can, how can somebody be blindsided? If Jim's here at the council, or we need to say, hey, we gotta wait, let's ask Jim, you know, if, if, whatever, you know, if that's okay, does it work, you know? There's, how are you blindsided? There's, there's, you can't be. Unless you're just not here, you know, or unless it just gets pushed through, and, you know, then we vote to pay for work that's already been done. You know, we were blindsided at the last meeting.
And I'm just, I'm asking, what's your recommendation? Yeah, do you have a recommendation here, do you wanna get information?
Now, but you can, and Ash can check on it in the morning.
Vote on something and then check afterwards. You need to check on it and then.
I'm not even lying with you.
Dick, Dick, this is getting ridiculous. He's now reeling me in like I'm a fish.
This is what? I, I'm sorry.
I'm not talking, I was talking.
I didn't do nothing.
Mick, you did too. That is absolutely ridiculous.
I'm not gonna argue with you.
This is getting out of hand.
Okay, so first of all.
I should not have to put up with that.
So, so first of all, this, I, I spent time looking at different cities and seeing if they had stuff for, okay, that's, you, you just have to go out and look up cities? That's what I did. You know, I spent my time researching this to see what other. Um, some, most of this is on there, some of my own folks in there, but that's, that's what I did. You're not gonna find, to go out and find a city that says the exact same thing that I have written down here.
No, no, I know, you've got the, you've got the materials from the Iowa League that formed this.
I didn't get this from the Iowa League.
So can we please make a phone call to the Iowa League, just to verify everything?
What are we verifying? Just tell me what we're verifying, Christine, cause I don't know. What are we verifying?
We've now said that after multiple years, the mayor can't appoint anything.
Okay, that's not what I said.
Well, I know, it was brought, it was brought up, so I'm saying we need to verify these appointments. And then, if I'm reading in the, what is the, what is being updated for the cemetery in the new code? Because in Beverly's legal bills, they, something for the cemetery in the new code. So is that to put the board in there?
Do you know when that was?
In her bills?
Our city administrator is maybe. Going on sixteen years to not have.
Or committees, sorry, whatever it is.
In the city code, correct?
I'm, I'm asking.
No, I'm just making that very clear. You guys have been on the council for two years, less than, so I'm just trying to resonate that changing city code is not the best thing to do in all cases.
And I'm not saying you can't undo it. Asking if that's what it was, cause I have no idea, I just.
But I have no problems with, with what you're talking about on citizens committees and council committees, it's just how that interacts with, um, constituents, so.
We can see what other towns do. Same thing that Mike Kaba did.
So I guess, I guess as a council member, the next time I wanna bring something up, I'm gonna contact you and have you do all the research then, and then you're gonna bring it here, and I'm not gonna do this research, because we're.
So right here, in her bill, on nine thirty, note to Ash regarding to include cemeteries in new code, including having a cemetery board as well. Now, I don't know who or what that is about, but I'm just saying it's in there.
How much did it cost us?
No, it was only twenty-six dollars. But I can tell you what, there's a lot more entries in here that shouldn't be in here.
So we're gonna have Ash look into this.
What are you gonna have Ash look into?
I, I can't look anything, but I.
No, what I'm saying is, every, every legal, we made a motion, probably over a year ago, that every legal transaction is supposed to go through him.
Yeah, I don't know.
Except lawyers, so.
Let me re, so Ash is supposed to call Beverly?
For?
For any legal.
That's what we did, to try to reduce legal.
Right, but if you look in these bills, there's a lot more phone calls than from just Ash, and I'm, it's multiple people, and multiple things, so.
And that's a very interesting one, because that's just coming up tonight.
Right, and I didn't know about that.
And it's like, why is that coming up, you know? Why, how did that even get brought up? I would like to have the answer to that.
So can we, can we actually revisit that and eliminate that from our bill list?
I'm gonna, if you wanna start picking apart, there's a lot more in her bills that I don't understand.
We need a committee to study a bill list.
Yeah, do we, we have many citizens that wanna do this?
I mean, cause, cause you know, there's emails from you, Brian, and there's emails from Dick, and there's emails from citizens that are calling and talking to Beverly that we're getting charged for, so.
How are we getting charged for citizens?
You add, you look at her bills.
I'm going to new banking to look at it.
That's right.
But how is that possible? Is there, are they should charge that?
I didn't, I didn't ask citizens.
You didn't ask.
Is this, is this, is this people that she's working with on projects that?
No, I already.
Okay, don't, just say, I lose some citizens.
Anybody to call. I didn't direct anybody to call unless they get my permission.
Okay, so let's, let's go back here.
Well, you just, you just started on directing Andy to talk directly to, um, Beverly.
Yeah, it is, it is Beverly.
She's been, what, who's here?
That's not, and there's Mike, there's.
But he's saying, he said we're gonna get billed for that, so we shouldn't wonder.
Cause we told him to do that, yes, to contact her. So back to this, so what are we gonna do? I didn't think it was gonna be that big of a deal, but evidently, when you're just trying to put out some, some, uh.
So I don't think it's a bad thing.
It's a good thing.
I think it's a good thing.
As he, he was very, what, as a citizen committee? Yeah, this is a, this is the steps you have to form as a citizen committee, so, well. And we shifted a little bit to other issues. Citizen committees, if you do search for the next two years, you're gonna come up with this point.
That's right.
So, so as for the citizens committee, I think it's a great idea, but I think we need to figure out this whole cemetery thing, because in January, when it switches.
We're gonna switch in January.
It should have the same rules, so, like, you know, when the council rotates, it should have the same set of rules, so then you can say.
Well, but what I'm saying is, and for the next person, they need to be clear on what's gonna happen in January.
Well, maybe we need to define what the roles of the liaisons are.
And he needs to be able to know if he can appoint people in, in January.
Right, well, I know that, I know our coach has police chief and, and some other stuff.
I would say we need to look at these things and, and evaluate further. But as for a citizens, I don't have the problem.
So do you want to?
Yeah, indeed.
So I suggest that we, we, we do whatever we gotta do tonight to get this thing finished and done. Why drag it on?
How many committees exist today? Cemetery, that's, that is?
That's as far as I know.
And that's what I'm saying.
Is there a parks and rec committee, Barb?
There's still.
Oh, yeah, parks and rec, there's still.
But there is citizens committee, cause nobody's on it. Nobody's on it from here, so that doesn't matter.
No, no.
So there's only one.
There is.
No, there's three.
Three committees?
Yeah, there's the whole committee, I just.
Yeah, but no council members on it.
No, 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 no. There is no committee that, no committees has any council member on it, except the cemetery. That, that's the only committee we have council member on.
Right, we had, we heard from Barb that you were specifically told, no, no council members.
Yes.
We're gonna be.
And they've been operating like that for years.
So my question is, so how long has the cemetery been operating the way it has?
No, cemetery, the way Long.
Kevin had a committee of that many people, at least for a long time, not that I know of, maybe. So, maybe.
We, I think, again, asked for committee and formed that committee, least not long time ago, because I think that happened while you were on the council.
It was, it happened well before me. I mean, it was going on well before me.
We had issues with the mowing and all this.
Cause I remember the first, the first meeting I went to, they said, you're the secretary, take notes, and I said, okay.
Yeah, I remember we had issues with the mowing and all this, so we said, form committees to citizens.
But it was well before me, so I don't know.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, well, that's the gap.
But.
That's what I'm trying to get at right here.
So for a citizen committee, let's finish it, Brian, let's get it done, hold on a minute.
Right, right.
So, the question is, is the mayor appoints person A to whatever, what is that person's responsibility?
What is their role?
What is their role? We have a citizens committee.
Usually when we have.
That's what I asked a half hour ago.
The, the committee used to have a, one council member, head of like, the head of silver and all this stuff. Usually, all the city would ask, who's the head of the city? We'd tell them, make us, who's the head of cemetery? Uh, Mike Kaba. That's how the rules are really due with ninety-nine percent.
That, that hasn't been going on.
Really much, as Mike Kaba said, he kind of a liaison between the public and us, and then, you know, if somebody could go over and say, who's? and us, and then, you know, if somebody called and say, who's on the cemetery, we say Mick as, so they call me, ask him, tell him Mick comes back to the council and we work with he here or with the conservatives. That's really how it's been working, and that's for long, long time, before even my time.
And has Jim always made the recommendations for the cemetery committee?
Yes.
Yes, he's always just came and made those recommendations. It's not any council person, but not the council person sitting up here saying blah, 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 it's Jim that comes and he speaks on behalf of them.
He, he can recommend to the committee. That's it. He can recommend to the committee, and then the person that's in charge of the committee comes up here and recommends to the council.
See, I guess, to me, I don't see anything wrong with the person that's over, whatever he appoints to be at that committee meeting, but not a member of that committee.
They can't.
Okay, alright.
But, yeah, Jim.
I thought Jim could, no, Jim.
It doesn't say they can't be there, he cannot hold a position.
It does, it does for a council member, but for Jim, Jim can be there and he can recommend to the committee, but he has no vote, he has no say so over it, he just recommends to the committee and the committee brings it to the council.
So then now that we're dismantling all of the cemetery stuff, then we need to have five people apply.
No.
You need to have new people.
So I, so my question is, how do you get five?
Yeah, you can't just leave it. I mean, you're gonna have to have two, if you're kicking Jim.
Why do you have to have five people on there?
If you're kicking Jim, and by, cause it's always been a five-person thing.
No, I guess.
So if you're kicking two people off, why wouldn't you wanna add two more people?
It, it, it's not been a five, I mean, when I've been on the council, it's not always been a five-person thing.
Well, I mean, it has.
I'm glad it is now, cause it's more active, that's good.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not, I'm not saying have more people than.
Right, so as it's written in here, it says consists of three and not more than five. So you can have at least three. If somebody comes up to you, Dick, and says, hey, I'd like to be on that, that cemetery committee or parks committee, you say, okay, we're gonna bring council, this council has final say. You know, you make a recommendation, just like you make a recommendation for library board or whatever else, you know, people can come talk to you, we work with you, and we either approve or we don't.
So what if, you're talking about for the committees?
Right, for.
Where the mayor points these people and the committee board?
No.
Here we go again.
This is so hard, right? He points the liaisons, the streets, the people, the liaisons, okay? People can come to him and say, I'd like to be on this. He comes to the meeting, just like he does tonight, and he says, I have somebody that would like to be on the cemetery committee, this is their council vote.
That's why I just, he's gonna put, he's gonna put the people on there, and he's also gonna put them on the committees, they come and ask.
I just said the council votes on that.
Correct, but he's going, so he's going to, he doesn't vote on these appointments either.
It's just like P and D, somebody fills out their application for planning and zoning, and they say, I wanna be on it, and it comes to the council.
So we're expanding what you're doing versus what.
Alright, so what do we have?
Can we just get some clarification?
Who are we getting clarification from and what? Actually clarify the issue. Because if, if we say Jim and Christina cannot be on this tonight.
Please don't make it about two people.
No.
This is what you're doing. This is banning this thing as a.
The county person and the street person, we got, we gotta say, well, are we gonna have the right amount of people for the cemetery committee to keep running?
Get two more citizens. Get two more citizens, you can't have a council person or for Jim to have no vote.
His point is what happens when you get Barb Boss's situation, you start with thirty and then you want.
Well, I understand that. Then you don't have a committee, you have to have at least three people.
Okay, so then.
This, this can't be.
So we have a committee.
I mean, honestly, I, I don't understand this, you know?
You don't understand what?
I, I, I don't understand.
They don't understand?
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused.
I don't know why either.
So, okay. No, no, I want to clarify about Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
Why we had thirty or forty people that signed up for team to this, then we decided that we was having our committee, we decided who was in charge of what, then the city council said, we want you to be in charge of all Parks and Rec.
That's a blue.
And we're like, oh, what the heck is going on? Who wants to do that? I said, well, don't take a rocket scientist to do this, and then Kristen Runcle got in charge of it. That is why we don't have an active Parks and Rec, because it was the, Kristen Runcle took it over to do it, and that was by the city council. So that had nothing to do with us saying that, oh my God, you have thirty people, now you're down to zero or one or whatever, that is why. And I wanted to clarify that, that it was city council that appointed her.
Oh, and that's fine, and, and I hope that nobody would say it was bad leadership on you. I didn't, I didn't think that at all because it's just, that happens.
No, we didn't want, we didn't want all the parks. Dick, how many parks was it?
All of them, we just found the lava park to take care of.
Yeah, and we started out as lava park because it was trashed, it was terrible, it was, you know, we had Dixon mother out there picking up, we had Chrissy McIntyre who was pregnant. I mean, it was a wonderful day, it was a great day. And then it just, we did all those improvements, we did everything, and then it went down the crapper after that. So that's my two cents.
Thanks. I think I've said what I need to say, so. No rules, no meeting adjourned? Yeah, I, I motion to adjourn. So what are we doing? So, what are we doing? Let's, let's.
Do we need to make a motion to pass this, or what do we need to do? Well, if I walk back through this, and I don't wanna hurt anything, but I'm just gonna tell you how I understand it in my mind, and.
There, there are no numbers in that page, so you don't understand anything.
There is, there's an eighteen, there's a three.
Probably a number on the bottom of the page, maybe.
Okay, so you got people that Dick appoints, and then if you have volunteers come forward for each one of those components, then he would.
The council would vote on it.
So what if you end up with a split vote on a person? Why, why are we appointing someone to that? I'm playing devil's advocate.
So what happens when you end up with a split vote on it? Anything else? And what if it's two to two? You only have four people here, it's two to two.
How many times, Dick, have you tried to appoint utility board members and it's been shot down? I can remember.
Years ago, was it?
Three years ago, there was two or three times that people got shot down.
Okay, I'm a little bit of a nerd on Robert's Rules of Order and how this whole process works, so I can say a little something about this. So the difference is, is a citizens committee is self-created. It's a group of committee citizens that go out and start a group, like the chamber or revitalization or whatever. It's an outside group outside of the city that starts a group. Now, usually, somebody on the city council cannot be a member of something like that because they're bringing actionable items to the city council. Now, it's different from a council committee in that the council committees are city operations. And typically, a county-appointed person can either be advisory, sit on the side and say what they know about city operations on, on what they're planning to do, or they would act in like Dick's role where they sit and they run the meeting, but they have voting rights. That's typically how it's done. So, you know, they can present information, they can provide agendas based on feedback from committee members, but usually it's an odd number of people and they vote and the council person either is running the meeting or just interjects their information.
But they don't vote, right?
Yeah, they do not vote.
I mean, that is, that is pretty much what this says.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's the difference.
Not in those words.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's the difference between a council committee and citizens.
Right, but the citizens committee, the, the council, there cannot be a council person on that committee.
Yes, correct.
Correct.
Yeah, and like you said, I went through real quick the city code and looked at the things that says that you can appoint and what the council can appoint. It says the council appoints the city administrator, city attorney, planning zoning commission, zoning and building administration. The mayor appoints mayor pro temp, library board trustees, utility board trustees, historical preservation, police chiefs, zoning board adjustment, and building official. So what the code doesn't say is how committees are established and how the appointments are done if a new committee is established, so that's something I would suggest council thinking about, but that's how I understand.
And, and I appreciate that, I don't know if it needs to be put in ordinance, but that's kind of what this does, is we have no structure, absolutely not, not, zero, okay? You just read it off, there's nothing about who points committees, what, what their role is, how they, how they work or defines them. Just trying to do that so we don't end up in any future situations. That's, I mean.
So they hope that happens.
It's not like anybody's trying to rob anybody of any perceived power that they have by sitting on a committee, it's just to make sure that they're all done the same way. There's expectations. And, and, and it doesn't say that even the mayor points liaisons, does it? No, it doesn't say that. It just does that, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but it just doesn't, it's not codified, you know?
Yeah, there's a lot of things, right? Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, thanks. After all that, are you ready? Nothing, does, does Ash still need to look at this and?
I think we ought to put that in effect tonight, as of tonight. Just be done with it and not bring it back two or three times and everything, just be done with it.
So you're making a motion?
I'll make a motion, absolutely.
Did you, were you gonna say something? I'm gonna second it, and, and, and just because if this happens to go through, but you know, it's not, it's not a, it's not an ordinance, you know, we can revisit it, you know, but we need something in there. My feeling is so we have these expectations for any, any committees.
I guess, so if you're wanting to adopt this, to me. So the mayor would appoint, or would bring these recommendations, that's not in here? I mean, there's just a couple, there's other things to add to this for clarity.
So the mayor can make recommendations, right? It stays a committee appointed by the Sturt City Council. He can make a recommendation, do we have to list who can make recommendations? Chief Rehuck could make a recommendation. Guess who's still gonna have to be approved by? The council. Mike Morgan can make a recommendation, gotta come to the council and be approved. You could get three people out there that says, I wanna be, have a committee for Good End Days, they come up to the council, we can say yes or no.
I think there's already a committee for Good End Days and they meet all the time.
Yeah, I would, I would know more comments than I would give a vote.
Okay, so to start this, mayor-appointed liaisons will not change citizens' requests for committee membership, like Brian, to the council by the mayor.
So now you're gonna limit it to only the mayor getting those recommendations?
I'm, I'm just trying to put down, I'm trying to put down, I guess, no, it doesn't have to just be.
I didn't scratch that. It doesn't have to be the mayor, I mean, it could be anybody like Mike, it could be Mike.
It, it could be any, it's, and, and even adding that the mayor appointments, we're not changing.
All I'm trying to say is we're trying to add rules to something, but yet we're wanting, we're not wanting to add.
What are we, what are we trying to add? We're, we're.
Trying to add clarity around the process, but we're not.
There wasn't even a process to begin with.
Exactly, so I'm trying to add some clarity.
Is this something that some of you can work on and we can deal with in December? So we're not sitting here keeping it open for the time?
No, we're gonna finish it tonight, I think we need to finish it tonight.
Just be brought to council.
Yeah, that's what it says.
Motion in a second, read what you have there, Rob.
Mayor-appointed liaisons will not change, citizens' requests for committee memberships will be brought to the council.
So that means next year Christina's gonna be cemetery, if the mayor-appointed liaisons don't change.
Okay.
Is, is that right? That's, that's the way that reads.
But she would not be, she'd be a liaison, but according to this, you would not have her.
I understand that, but now you're saying if, if he wanted her on something different or, or Mick on something, or myself on something different, you couldn't do it because you're saying those are not gonna change.
No, I'm saying he's still going to retain that appointment.
Right, that says so. Let's, let's move on. Evidently, this is too complicated right now, but we gotta, we.
I'm adding, mayor liaison appointment process will not change.
Okay, whatever. If that's.
Cause after the first year, Ash and I have sat down and decided.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying, I'm not changing anything you do, Dick.
Okay, I know, I know. So we have a motion in a second. So how do you vote? Velden, Renzo?
No.
Kaba?
Yes.
Askren?
Yes.
Okay, now Mick, are you talking on the next one or?
No, that was it.
That was it?
That was it, Mike and I joined up on that.
Okay, A, public hearing, development agreements.
B, C, I'm just talking to Ash.
I open up, A, public hearing. Comments, concerns?
Yes, yes. I forgot to bring up the, I think I forgot, Matt House and Whitel Stewart.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Mid-October, Matt House asked me if the city would apply for the downtown housing grant for his Stewart Hotel. Matt House cannot be present. He's unobligated.
Wait a second, Matt, we're talking about Stuart Flower Gifts right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry you guys had to sit through all of that, by the way, I apologize.
No, comments, concerns?
Any comment? No.
Close the public hearing then.
B.
B, I open the public hearing on development agreement with Stewart Funds LLC. At this time, open public hearing, any comments?
Yeah.
Close the public hearing.
Okay. D, E, and F, and take one more.
Move. Move by Velden.
Second.
Second by Askren. How do you vote? Velden?
Yep.
Renzo?
Yeah.
Kaba?
Move.
Move by Belton?
Second.
Second by Askren, how do you vote, Belton?
Yep.
Renzo?
Yeah.
Kaba?
Yes.
Askren?
Yes. I would encourage everybody to go into the flower shop because of all the renovations to work. Christie ran that for two decades and these guys are taking us on to give her a whirl too, so. My daughter had a corsage made and it's great, so thank you for backing our town.
Okay, nine. Resilience number twenty-one thirty-four C.
So this is for Mike and Christina, and what this does is this shifts the payment from, um, the sewer fund paying the sewer plant bond to TIF paying. Okay, so this benefits the city by doing that, and it creates more cash flow than the sewer fund.
So you need a motion?
I need that.
Move by Kaba?
Second.
Second by Askren, how do you vote, Belton?
Yeah.
Renzo?
Yeah.
Kaba?
Yes.
Askren?
Yes.
And we'll be meeting Wednesday, five-thirty. We'll do the TIF certificate and do some kind of refinance.
Okay, ten, White Hole Road, Flores, my life.
He was enjoying the show.
So I'll take ten and eleven all together.
Okay.
So White Hole Road. We received a quote to do the repairs to fill the ruts. And the four Dodge asphalt, uh, back in October, September maybe, was, uh, council awarded that to them. They are not able to get to that this year, the weather's too cold, so that will remain dropped until next spring. If there's some consideration from the council to possibly not do those next spring, that can be evaluated over the winter and we can decide that as we get closer to, uh, next spring.
There was a five-o vote to accept the bid to pertinent counties and do that slurry. And then that committee should have been terminated, the Agribusiness Park Committee should have been terminated the night of that meeting. It was during.
But we were still finishing, we still had.
I wasn't aware of that.
Permanent, we talked about that, we had the permanent.
Yeah, so there's, there's still the permanent fix that is still being discussed, and I've been talking to Guthrie County engineer about what the permanent fix looks like. Don't know what that looks like yet. They're looking at, the county's looking at doing road repairs on White Hole Road beyond the city limits of Stewart. You know, going out west, maybe out east, don't know how far. They're also looking at going north, you know, they're looking at, you know, what can they do beyond what is inside city limits to White Hole Road? And then how city involvement would be in that is still to determine. Half of White Hole Road is in the Dare County, so that has to be taken into consideration. So I'm just reporting to the council, there's still a lot of balls in the air to try and figure out what that permanent solution looks like.
What's their, what's their thing, uh, with the temporary fix?
I, I wanna add to that, I wanna add to what he's just said, I'm against it. As Forrest said, they're gonna study their finance in twenty-twenty-two and they're gonna do the permanent fix in twenty-twenty-three. I have made a phone call to Mike Dixon, county supervisor. Regarding their position on the seventy thousand, he was supposed to give back to me, but he hasn't yet. And my recommendation, and I hope that will be something to lead us to some kind of a. No, we're at now is to have some kind of a written agreement. With the county supervisor, to get us to. To kind of figure out where's the stain in the temporary fix and where's the stain in the permanent fix. Cause right now, we are not getting really a clear answer, and I think Forrest will elaborate on that, on where we at today. In the temporary and the permanent. We healing stuff, but we really haven't had anything, and I was hoping Mike Dixon would give back to me on that, but he hasn't yet, maybe he has.
No, watch, I have not heard on, on that either, so.
So when we, when we had these meetings and stuff, uh, I was under the impression that we were strictly looking for. We, we want a permanent fix, I mean, I want the road fixed as much as anybody, that we were gonna be happy with the temporary fix. And then kind of give everybody a cooling off period, you know, a couple, three years, whatever it was, you know? Uh, so the county, if they had projects they wanted to do, they could go do them, we could sit here and kind of figure out where our finances are, and now we're, we had a, an agreement, I thought. Or we're lip service, that says, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, and now we're like, where are we?
Well, I can tell you a little bit that I know, that they told me, when I went up to those meetings, and they told me in twenty-three, they were gonna do the project to the north. Out of Stewart, they're gonna go west out of Stewart, and they would like to incorporate our project in with those two projects, that way it could get done cheaper. So that's all I know about it, but that's what they did tell me, and, and there was two supervisors that told me the same thing. And they weren't in the same room either, so.
Was, wasn't the supervisors directed Josh to create a policy? To make it a fifty-fifty split between the city and Guthrie County? And within that policy, then that a twenty-eight E agreement needed to be developed for the permanent fix? Was what I heard in their meeting. So they agreed to pay the thirty thousand for the temporary fix.
Is that an emotion and some sort of?
It's in their minutes, it's in our minutes.
It's in their minutes.
So when we adopted that, oh, we're gonna do the slurry, partner with the counties, we had six or eight things attached to that, it was unanimous vote. I don't know why we would move away from that, so I guess, no.
I, I wasn't able to understand that we were moving away from that.
No, no, it just, it keeps getting tough, it's like a tree.
So the only comment I'd say is that. In talking to Josh, and Josh, the county, Guthrie County engineer, is the only person I've had a conversation with. I've not had conversations with the, any of the board supervisors. And so, you know, Josh is just talking about ideas, talking about, you know, where we might go. Has to go to the county supervisor for anything you should. His comment was that if we are waiting on the temporary fix till spring, and if things move twenty, spring of twenty-two. And if the permanent fix is gonna happen in the spring of twenty-three. Do we want to spend the money, the hundred and some thousand dollars on the temporary fix? If only a year later, we're gonna be doing a permanent fix? Now, now may, now maybe, the council says, yes, we still wanna do the temporary fix? Then that's what we do. If the council says, boy, why spend that money because the per, permanent fix is gonna happen a year later? Then that's a discussion, I'm saying, those are just ideas being thrown out, that's something that the council need to look at after the first.
So we went from the beginning.
Temporary fix in the spring.
Yes, temporary, we're, we're set for.
So we were supposed to have it done this year, so, I mean, again, it's more talk. So what I'm getting at is, is Nick went up there, he got the furthest we could, which was bond capacity. Then we got to a point, we heard an eleven-thousand dollar number, now we're hearing thirty. But yet the road has the same problems and, and it's even worse than what it has been. So before, I would ever even dream of having some ridiculous conversation about a permanent fix. I wanna make sure that we get a temporary one done first, so I know that we've got something in place. And we've got at least partners that are all going the same direction. So I guess, I agree with Ash, I guess, I, I'd like to make a motion, we have Ash, uh, Forrest and Josh ratify a twenty-eight E agreement. Again, hold on, accept the slurry bid as presented and voted on before. Delay any discussions on a permanent fix until the slurry fix is complete. And then, uh, no council committee at this time.
But why would you want to delay, I mean, if you're gonna do a twenty-eight E for.
That's fine with me.
No, I'm just, I'm asking.
I'm tired of talking about this.
If you're gonna do a twenty-eight E for a temporary fix, why would you not spend, I mean. So in these talks that we've been having. Steve Brick's recommendation was to do a short contract for the temporary fix, right, Ash?
Which can all be in the twenty-eight E agreement.
Hear me out, he said, do the short contract for the temporary fix, it's already in their minutes, it's already in our minutes. That we had all this temporary stuff ironed out, it's unfortunate that it's not gonna happen this year, nothing we can do about that. It's gonna happen in the spring. There's a certain spot out there that Jim apparently, right?
Yeah, there is a certain spot.
Working on fixing by game street.
Yes, they're, they're looking to get that done this fall.
And Steve also recommended for the permanent fix, which everybody has already came and said, Guthrie has already said this is our policy. But you have to have a twenty-eight E to go with the policy. Why, and Steve said it would take him how long, Ash? Three hours or less to finish the twenty-eight E to have everything in writing?
Yeah.
And then we don't have to discuss it anymore because it's already in writing and we're already paving the path. And on top of that, now, we really need to be focusing on, you know, working together because now we potentially have an infrastructure bill that's on the president's desk to be signed.
I'm not putting my faith in the federal government.
I'm not saying that, I'm just.
Balance our budget.
I'm just saying, if it gets signed, it's something that we should be looking at, maybe trying to get federal funds, I mean.
I just wish, after that.
These are.
Yeah, and, and, and I.
Any dollar spent on this road, and, and keep in mind, all these what-if ideas have no dollar value to them, there's not one dollar of taxes that this road improvement's gonna make. So it's gonna hit all the taxpayers. So the cheaper the better, a permanent fix, the cheaper the better, I get it, but there's something between a hundred and thirty thousand, what'd you say, five million for concrete the whole way?
Well, if you ripped it all out and.
To fix it.
Why would we do that?
To fix it, to fix it on a concrete basis. So, so what is the long-term number then, if it's not five million?
Don't know that.
Nobody knows that because we don't have an agreement on.
Still several million dollars, right?
I don't know that either.
Okay, the one you gave us was one point five to two million, right?
Yes.
The bond lasted the same time period as the fix. So, I mean, again, everybody in the room gets to pay for it. And so I'd rather make sure that we got good partners and we can pay a little bill, that there's no increase in taxes first. See where that gets us, and let the twenty-eight E get ratified by, uh, Ash and you and Josh, it's Ash recommended.
That, I'm, I'm in the same vote, it's cause we were, we were told we were gonna get thirty thousand. And, you know, we don't even know where that's at, so how, if we can't even nail down the thirty thousand and get that done. How, how we, how, I, I don't have any faith in the other number, whatever it may be, you know, how, I mean, yeah, but let's do this first. Get it done, make sure that we all are on the same page, cause evidently, I think all of our ships are going this way right now. We're not going down the same, the same path.
We can do the short-term fix in the spring, the only question that Josh brought up was, hey, it looks like we might be doing this in twenty-twenty-two for the permanent fix. We just, are we sure we wanna spend this money on the.
I might be doing a lot of things in twenty-twenty-three myself, you know, but.
Right.
I don't know until, we don't know.
And I'm, I'm just, my update is, there's a lot of unknowns, and we can decide this after the first of the year, we don't have to decide tonight or today.
Which is fine with me, we're only talking first.
Slurry today, and what it will be.
We have, we have a contract amount that's already.
Yeah, we rebid it, we pulled on that.
So the, but why would you rebid it if you already have a?
We're not gonna rebid it.
Yeah, well, no, that's what they're saying, so we're set for the temporary fix.
Yes, we're set for the temporary fix.
County has already committed the thirty thousand, it's in their minutes.
Yes.
So there's nothing to decide about the temporary fix, it's done, the only thing we have left on the temporary fix is the drainage issues, correct?
Yes.
And which you're working on.
Yes.
So there's nothing, the temporary fix is done. It's just, we're looking at nailing down the final legal document.
Yes, the twenty-eight E agreement for the long-term fix is still something that would need to be done.
I think, I think the twenty-eight E should reference the temporary and long-term.
That should reference any.
And that's fine, if that's what we wanna do.
It's not a short, long-term, so I.
So my understanding, my understanding about the motion soon you read it is, that I would work with Josh and Forrest. To have the concept of the twenty-eight E agreement for the temporary and permanent.
Any, and should cover the situation, right, should cover any repairs.
Yeah, and use a legal, we need, it's needed, yeah?
The twenty, the twenty-eight E should cover any repairs, whether it's temporary or long-term or whatever, it should be.
Repairable.
Yes, and then I put in here as requested by Ash, you would involve Steve, but not just constant meetings who are paying legal bills.
Right, and nobody, and I don't think that's my concept, it was just to finish it, right?
Where are we at with Steve?
And the engineering? We got the engineering part, questions, answer, correct?
As far as.
And then we talked about who, so looking over the major project, who's gonna engineer it? You don't have review rights, or how is that all working?
So to answer, uh, council member Renzo's question. The, if the long-term fix is a bigger project than just what's in Stewart, and that's what Josh was talking about, was that it would be. Going out west further, you know, miles, it's not just a little bit.
Clear out the case stand, I think.
Yeah, it could be, quite a ways west, that that would become a county project, it would be designed by the county. And it would be a county-administered project, but that the city and myself would be able to review those plans and specifications. To make sure that the city's interests are looked at, and Jim would look at them as well, to make sure of agreement with what they're proposing to do to the streets. The White Hole Road portion in the city limits.
Okay, I guess we're, we're getting close to what the motion is, that I would, Forrest, Josh will come up with the concept of the twenty-eight E agreement. Temporary, permanent, fix, whatever it is, and then the last tip for the last will take it to, uh, Steve to finalize it in a legal way and move on, bring it to the.
That's correct, Ash.
Okay.
You wanna read this one?
Yeah.
You go ahead, that's what's in the motion.
I put this, you recommend it, no, you don't want. Okay, that's fine. And, okay, so live to have Forrest, Ash, Josh, and Steve as needed ratify a twenty-eight E agreement. Maintaining the slurry bid as presented, delay any discussions on a permanent fix until the slurry is completed. Supposed to be spring, then that's four months, five months away, right?
Why would you do that? In case something else went wrong, why would you put that in a narrative like that?
Because with, with the, I know, I understand the twenty-eight E, twenty-eight E, but with the, the, uh, fix. And then the permanent, why would you put that being as one?
Because what happens if it does, if the time doesn't allow, or something like that, do you change that better?
I guess I'm just wanting to make sure that the temporary fix is done, that's all, because I'm not sure, you know, they did the same type of repair. From like Menlo, Clearover to Dexter, and it's lasted longer than what they planned.
Well, I can tell you other places that it lasted about six months.
Right, right.
So.
My concern, I guess, is that we're gonna end up, you know, with nothing done.
We're not gonna do the temporary and then we're gonna wait till.
We'll end up a long-term.
So I'm confused, the temporary is happening.
Hundred and thirty thousand, we're only paying a hundred.
Right now, yes, it, it, the council would have to change their mind to do something.
Temporary is already done, we've already made the motion, we've already accepted the bid, everything's done.
So we can include in the twenty-eight E, that's.
No, and that's not what I'm just saying, I just, I don't understand why everything's, that it's gonna change between now and spring.
So, delay. I'm saying delay any discussions on permanent fix until slurry is complete, that would incur costs, so basically, if you're talking long-term, you.
I, 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 it'd be nice over the winter if we could be talking about the long-term.
Right, as long as there's not a cost incurred to the city, that's the problem, we started this discussion in March, we've got thousands of dollars out the door, and there's still.
We can't have Steve Brick do anything till.
Yeah. There won't be any cost.
Out of here.
Right.
Yeah.
There won't be any cost, though.
There's gonna be for the twenty-eight E?
Yeah, we're gonna take the twenty-eight E, um, when we get done. So Steve would be the last phase.
I know, but I, I wouldn't want Steve to not be able to do anything until May because the sorcery seal isn't done.
No, I'm, I'm, that's not what I'm saying, I'm talking about planning, reviewing engineering stuff, no, no obligation to the city financially. As it relates to planning for a long-term fix, you know, if short-term is done, so we know there's a short.
I think the only thing long-term that he's referencing is letting Steve do the twenty-eight E, not anything construction-wise, or just doing the legal document. Right, that's all that, that, that we're asking, is that a long-term legal document be drafted? And be complete, not to start.
I, I was just interpreting your.
As anything.
As anything, got you, no.
And so no council committee at this time, no tax increase for the short-term repairs?
That's your motion.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
I say.
Second by Askren, how do you vote, Belton?
Yeah.
Renzo?
Yeah.
Kaba?
Yes.
Askren?
Yeah.
How we doing, all the talk about Casey's?
Casey's, Casey's up there.
Can we not talk about that?
I think table that. It, it's, all I'm doing is, is updating the council, you know, at the last meeting, we sent that notice out. On Friday, October twenty-second, we had a onsite meeting with Jim, myself, Matt was there, and representatives from Casey's. We went through what was completed, what was not completed, we came up with three items that Casey would complete. They were, uh, so if you wanna look at them, they are the southwest return of Eighth and Division. There's a bunch of, behind the curbs, not. Ruts this deep, so they're gonna backfill that with wreck, with, uh, rock. Southwest corner of the project on Eighth, there's a manhole, there's a couple manholes where the ground is sunk around the manholes, they're gonna fill around that. And the sidewalks busted to pieces on the entrance into the north parking lot off of Division, they're gonna fix those three things. We looked at South Sixth Street, they ran some trucks on South Sixth, that's Jim's house, and did some pavement damage. Casey's agreed to pay for a portion of that damage. And so I've been working on coming up with a logical reason for, or logical computation for what that percentage would be. We end up out in the county, so I'm dealing with the county engineer with the dare to make sure that he's okay with it. We got quotes from contractors for the cost, so I'm still working on that part of it. And then the seating still would need to be done, uh, around the lift station, south or west of Burger King, Jim's getting cost for that. So nothing, first of all, none of the repairs, Casey said they would do, have been done yet. Uh, checked on that tonight, went way into the meeting. Uh, but the other two items, we don't have resolution to those yet that are on Jim and my, my court, so we're working on that. They have not submitted any costs for the cost of the project to us like we requested. So Ash cannot do anything with the TIF because we don't have the numbers, so that part of it's on hold for another next year.
So why would I have to issue you a thing like that?
Retain it, do every, can you tell?
This was a Casey's project.
Yeah.
So there was no city funds involved in this project, there was a development agreement.
Okay.
So it's the legal requirements of the development agreement that were.
Is it fair that you're doing all the follow-up, a follow-up work to get this done, I mean, to be on the punch list? So, so why can't, I'm asking this, and you can tell me no, that, that's your recommendation, why wouldn't we refer this to John? To do what we voted on last, last meeting and terminate this thing? And start sending correspondence because there's no reason for you to have to chase this thing. The city tried to offer them a rebate back, we don't need to chase them to give them money. If they're not willing to play ball with us, we're the little guy in this case. They got a hundred million dollars in the bank. It's not us. So, why wouldn't we just say you're in violation? We can't continue to do this. We've tried since what? Did you say middle of summer?
April.
April. So, we're on, we're on seven, eight months of this party, so why can't we just refer it to him to do that? Is that possible?
And we gave him, we gave him the default letter, correct? Say, you have this list to cure. And if you don't, we're going to terminate, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I didn't.
But, but, I, I guess if you wanted to refer it to John Danos as far as next steps, that's fine. I don't want to make that.
I understand.
Right, but we fulfilled our, our obligation to notify them.
Yes.
Has it been thirty days?
Yes.
And it's, and we've passed that time. They haven't done it, you know, I mean.
And that, we, as long as we can. That's why I'm going to have a motion.
So, I can make a motion to refer this to John Danos.
I would say.
Is that what you want to do?
No, I want to terminate the agreement.
We got to work with these people for a long time. I, I guess I would refer to John Danos to follow the requirements of the development agreement that you have.
But I mean, what's the council's intent? My, my, I don't have any energy left to want to discuss this again. We've tried since April. I don't want to discuss it anymore. I don't, you know, I'm not into this. Let's get into compliance. We've tried. And you're doing all the work, so I'm in, moved to say let's terminate this.
Development agreement.
And we sent the default. I mean, that, that was the key is we, we waited and waited, we sent the default and we said with the intention.
Put that in the motion, please.
That we know that you needed to send the default in order to be able to terminate, and they still have not come to the table to do all of the things that they were supposed to do.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to respond to that. We sent the default agreement, but I, but John Danos is the one that has to remember what the.
Correct, right.
But I guess it's our, it would be my expectation making that motion, and we've tried in good faith to make this work. It's not. So, we're, we can't continue that.
Well, second, move in second.
We can't continue to chase our tail off, that's, that's all.
Okay, so how do you vote? Belton?
Yeah.
Renslow?
Yes.
Cobboff?
Yes.
Ashburn?
Yeah.
Okay, now eleven.
Well, number eleven, we're not taking the.
No action on you.
But I thought I was going to have everything worked out. We're arguing about a thousand dollars worth of rip. So, um, so, so we're holding your, we're holding the retainage. We're holding ten thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, we're still holding that. I'm trying to work with them, negotiate.
So, why can't we just give in, give the thousand dollars and get this thing over with here?
They came and did two out of the three. Is that what I was on the.
Oh, my God, he's, what? I'm just asking. What?
We, we.
You're just going to fight with money.
Then you want to give a thousand dollars away.
We got nine left.
So, what?
Is there liquidated damages in this?
No, but they, they've been done a long time. We're just arguing about it's the amount. Just table it. I'll bring, I'll have it figured out by the November.
I made a motion too.
But, uh, December meeting, sorry.
Okay, so, we can't just go do it ourselves? Hire somebody local and do this.
We can. I'm trying to negotiate a deduct for what's worked, what's left, and then Jim can deal with his own.
The whole thing's going to be completed.
Just relax.
Just give him another month.
Just relax.
Or anything.
You think that he has a better problem?
I didn't doubt that. Show me his life easier, not chasing all these people.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Forrest.
Thank you.
Taking a couple of minutes to read.
Do you need me for anything else tonight?
That was easy to buy a beer.
He wasn't joking.
Okay.
Thanks for all your.
Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest. Okay, twelve gas franchise fees.
Yeah, that's him.
Get another twelve.
Gas franchise fees.
You got his sheets, so he has his agenda back?
He, no, it's fine. I already got it.
You got.
Okay, give it to Mike.
Yeah, Mike.
Okay, let's go. I need a motion about the twelve gas franchise.
I'll make a motion.
Second by Belton. How do you vote? Belton?
Yeah.
Renslow?
Yeah.
Cobboff?
Yes.
Ashburn?
Yes.
Okay, twelve chief reha.
You got one of these for you, Gia?
Thank you.
Okay, so, essentially where we're at, um, when we did the salary changes and, and that proposal, um, I had asked for the additional, um, ten thousand dollars for vacation and stuff like that to cover vacation costs. Um, at no point were we thinking of, you know, sick time, holiday time. This never came out of our budget. It's always been something that comes out of the general fund. Um, I think if you were to look at all the other department heads, you'll see that, um, there's no budget for, for instance, like extra pay for holidays or something like that. So, come last pay period, I get emailed this, uh, police department page, so they gave you guys a copy of um, saying, hey, you've got a thousand dollars left in that account. How do you want us to divvy out the remainder of that, you know, to the officers that, that work some of this overtime? So, I started going through it and I started to realize, and I'm sorry if you can't read my writing, but I'll explain what I needed to say. So, a lot of this stuff is actually holiday pay for like Christmas, um, you know, Memorial Day, uh, Labor Day, things like that, that came out of that ten thousand dollars. Um, and then on top of that, there was also, um, an expense back in, it would be the first, um, pay period where two officers were required to be out of work due to COVID. We were told by the state we had to be in quarantine. So, that took us down to two officers, uh, during that time period. So, obviously, to fill those gaps, I had to have people work. Um, so, that's part of that, that chunk. And then here towards the end, towards the, I guess it would start uh, nine, the nine, ten paycheck and on down, um, that was, you know, where we started to actually use some of the vacation money that, that, that account was set up for. So, what I gave you was this, this sheet just kind of simplifies it a little bit. Um, what it's showing is that in two thousand twenty-one, if you take eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-four number, which is the total that the city gave us, uh, that we had spent so far. If you look at that, only twenty-nine hundred, well, two thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars was spent for vacation time out of that ten thousand, which means, uh, essentially, all four of us didn't get anywhere near our, our full vacations. Um, twenty-nine hundred dollars of that was spent in sick time. That's just in COVID sick time. We didn't take a single day off outside of those, those days that we were required to leave. And then the twenty-three hundreds, twenty-three seventy-nine, seventy-two, that was holiday, Christmas, from last year, New Year's, President's Day, Memorial Day. Um, and the Good Egg Days also came out of that account, which in years past, we've, we've always just had it. The council's voted to have it come out of the general fund, um, to pay for those officers, the extra officers work Good Egg Days. So, uh, essentially, we've spent eighty-nine hundred dollars, um, of that ten to get me through the next, to the, get me through to the end of the year, because I had an officer had to take some family, uh, leave uh, with the, the Family Leave Act. So, I've got some extra shifts that I need to cover with, in the last two paychecks. There shouldn't be any open shifts remaining the rest of the year, but we've already worked those, those shifts. So, the next two paychecks, uh, the one that we just had last week and then the next one. Um, I would need essentially twenty-one sixty-nine, excuse me, twenty-one sixty-nine forty-six to cover the, uh, holiday pay, to cover the excess of that, that, uh, sick time, just to get us through to January.
I'm confused. Why does your holidays come out of your overtime budget?
I don't know. I think.
That makes no sense to me because every other employee that works for the city does not have their holidays come out of its budget.
I think the best way I can explain it, it's not that, I don't think there's any, any sort of, um, like, no one's trying to do anything wrong here. I think we're the only department that has to work. You see what I'm saying?
Rescue has to work.
Well, no, 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 and I don't, I don't mean that in a bad way. What I'm saying is like, for instance, let's say, uh, Thanksgiving. City hall employees aren't here, right?
Right.
So, they're getting paid their normal hours to work. That might not come out of a, they don't have overtime. They just have, they get a day off, but they got paid to work.
I'm confused why you're being penalized for coming to work holidays. I mean, rescue has to work holidays.
Sure.
Like, the medic is there on Thanksgiving or Christmas or whatever, but they don't, I just don't understand why not.
Yeah.
I thought we did.
Those should not be in overtime. Like, overtime and vacation is separate from holidays.
I, I one hundred percent agree.
So, I'm confused why we have to use that to pay your holidays.
Sure. And, and, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to discredit what you're saying. I think, I agree with you. I'm just trying to maybe explain it to, the, the explanation I've always got from people was that, or from the city, was that, um, you know, we don't really have a budget for that for other departments either, but, but I think we're different. Rescue would be the same. Uh, but for instance, like, if I get sick tomorrow and I had to take the day off, nobody can, nobody works with me. I'm the only officer working that shift. So, in order for someone to cover those hours, someone has to come in on their day off to work. Whereas like, if someone got sick at City Hall, they might be able to share the resources. They got, you know, numerous employees. They might be able to say, hey, Nagin's out today. You guys help cover her workload today. I don't have that ability in, in the police department. So, if we have to take, let's say, ten days off for quarantine, um, that really gets us in a bad spot. Not to mention, two of us. So, we had, we're down from four officers to two officers at, at one point, um, and we had to have officers working twenty-four hours a day. So, a lot of officers were filling shifts. Here lately, we've had, with Shane at the academy and then the family leave, we're backed under those two officers and that's where it kind of, it got us. Now, I will say, if you look at any of our time sheets, um, throughout the year, you know, if I get a cold and I, I absolutely have to be sick, we'll swap shifts or something. We don't try to, you know, to eat up this, this overtime. Um, perfect example of, of some of those tools, like this weekend, you know, I had an officer that worked eighteen hours of overtime on their day off. That's not going to be turned into the city to be paid for. Um, and we do that all the time. We, we work those extra shifts all the time out of just kind of the, you know, the kindness of our hearts, and we care about this community. But when we get down to two officers and I have to have officers working double overtime and they're not getting paid anything to do it, that's where we, we start to struggle. So, uh, if we can, if we can get that extra two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, that puts us on track to get to the end of the year as long as no one else gets sick. Now, if we all get COVID again in December, we're going to be over budget again. You know, I can't control that. But especially if it's getting pulled out of that overtime account.
So, we just had another, if I remember it, did we not have another city employee that was out because of quarantine?
It makes really cool, Christina, because we have had all these jokes think that nobody really want to hear it anyway. We said it out that we have a straight pay salary
Okay.
and ten thousand to do whatever it is.
That's, that's it.
That's it. And we be moving out that giving you a report every month. The point actually did good. Ask. I'm really in favor of actually bringing this up because it's not big.
Right.
You know, he did a job.
No, I, I'm in favor of it. I just, I don't understand why the holidays aren't outside of your.
You said it aren't this way. Straight pay and then ten thousand for any extra. He's been doing that every month, giving you a report.
Right.
From when, until today, he just come and asking for an exception this year for this two thousand extra. You can approve it, or disapprove it, but going back to discuss the structure, we're going to be here until mid-month.
So, I don't want to discuss the structure because I'm in favor of this. My question is the holidays.
I know, but.
That's the.
That's the whole problem.
It's just like that. It was just like that. He's getting the extra pay that we give him, increase wages. He gets his credit and then any extra goes to the ten thousand. So, that's kind of the conclusion, didn't he?
This, and then we went out and borrowed a half a million dollars. So.
I'm in favor of it. I'm just trying to figure out why the holidays, and so I just, I guess I'm confused why holidays.
It was said like that. It was just like said like that.
It's because of the way we set up.
He's giving the higher pay and giving ten thousand on the side.
Wait, wait.
He has done well.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I'm going to give you the true side. He has done well until today. If he's coming to ask for those two thousand, I don't see a problem personally, but if the council has issues with it, that's fine.
I don't have any issues there. I'm just trying to figure out.
Let's back up so we recall what we did. We did our budget in February and March and jump in here by saying things wrong. And it wasn't just the police department. It was, um, to fund primarily the police department, but also a little bit of rescue, okay? So, now we have a three-year bond at a hundred-ish, a hundred and thirty thousand annual payment?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we got a cops grant to cover a part of that. We just raised hotel motel tax, okay? So, that's going to give us another thirty-five thousand a year-ish, and that'll have to cover what? Twenty-five to go to backfill this. So, we're still, once the grant runs out, we're seventy-five thousand dollars short because of that decision. So, I mean, that's where, when we get into holiday versus what we approved, I don't even care.
I'm clarifying. That's what we decided. That's all I'm.
Yeah, I know. I'm in favor. I'm in the deserved answer. And I give you the answer in a nutshell because.
Which is fine. Thank you.
We talked about it on the explanation. I don't see anything wrong with what he's asking for.
And I don't either. It's well deserved.
I, uh, I'm not saying that to get you to approve or disapprove. I'm just saying both sides. You said it. You said it very well. He told the instruction. He tried to hold our deal. He came short. That's fine.
Is that money available in the ticket? Is there ticket fund money that's available for that?
So, we can't use that kind of money for.
Nobody can be used for something else and reallocated for something else.
I, I, I have to.
So, you're saying you have twenty? Thirty, is it the request is the thirty-two, forty-four?
Twenty-one.
So, what I would need, I mean, what I would need in addition to that ten thousand would be two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine. Right now, we have money sitting in that account of store.
And he has like nine hundred, six hundred, seven hundred.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve the two thousand dollars.
Nine hundred.
Money to cover that, so we're not breaking any budget.
I'd have, I mean, I don't have those numbers on me, but, um, the other thing I'll, I will mention, you know, just with the COVID stuff, I mean, if you look at the COVID, the COVID stuff is more than what I'm asking for. So, you know, twenty-nine hundred dollars of this was used to, to pay for COVID sick time. That's stuff that we can get back from the federal government.
Okay.
There's, there's plans out there. Um, I'm not an HR person, so I don't know how to do that stuff, but I forwarded the information I did find to the city so they can look into it. Um, but I know that there's, there's a dollar-for-dollar tax program to pay for some of that. There's also some, um, you know, some COVID relief fund, I think is what they called it, that can help pay for that stuff.
Just to repeat what you're talking about.
Yeah, no, because you're bringing that up because that's going to be, my question is, with all this COVID, there's got to be something out there that we can get.
And, and the twenty-nine hundred that we spent is more than what I'm actually asking for. So, that was covered.
So, this just gives you to the end of the year, right?
Yeah, and it is tough, it's tough to move those two thousand.
The, the main thing, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to have, I, I don't think we need to have the, the big debate right now. I, what I'm trying to explain is that this is a weird year. We have COVID. There's things that were unexpected. We can't plan for. Um, it's impossible to ever budget for sick time. I mean, the city gives us forty-five days of sick time. How do you budget for that? I mean, that would literally be like thirty-four, thirty-seven thousand dollars. It's going to be those catastrophic years if someone gets sick, and we may go over budget. But there's years, I can honestly tell you, and you can look it up. The entire time I've been here, I have not had a single sick day paid for until it's COVID. I've been here twelve, thirteen years. Now, those days are taken off and swapped. Everyone's taking a sick day paid. So, this one, it can be budgeted or it can be reimbursed. Um, you know, it, it covers what, we didn't have a choice. We were, we were required by the, by the state to, to take that COVID, that quarantine. Um, you know, obviously, we wanted to abide by that, but, you know, it wasn't like we could plan ahead for that.
Well, I, I hope we go to the next year. I think I'm not trying to defend the base. I think, uh, to get to this point, go on December, that's the end. It'll start over January. I think they've done well, you know.
We won't have anybody in the academy next year.
Wait a second.
I was going to say that, you know.
December.
Next year could be different.
Well, it's something along those lines. It'll be early December.
Needs to be different.
We just have to get you on a, on a, on a, keep you all healthy, right?
So you wanna say your motion again, Christina?
Well, Mick made a motion to pay him already.
Oh, okay.
So I guess I'll just second.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, I bet he was over here.
Mick made a motion, Christina said. That's fine. Okay, how do you vote then? Belton?
Just taking this, uh, fine revenue and applying to that because that's revenue.
Didn't he just say you couldn't do that?
He can through, he can through other ways than applying that directly.
Okay.
So is that part of that motion or not?
What is?
You're going to apply this as part of that?
It, it is. Well, it is, so it could be a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, move then second.
How do you vote? Belton?
Yeah.
Reznoff?
Yeah.
Kova?
Yes.
Asher?
Yep.
Thank you, Dave.
Alright, thanks.
Two fifteen, same shirt annexation, public hearing. Open the public hearing now. If you receive any comments concerned, we get a public. Close the public hearing. We're doing both these.
Is this thing done now?
I, yeah, assuming.
Bills for a second time around here.
So we need a motion to be answered. Second by Belton, second by Kova, how do you vote? Belton?
Yes.
Reznoff?
Yes.
Kova?
Yes.
Asher? Okay. Sixteen, Deere County Tourism Council appointment. I will make the recommendation of Greg Dudley with the councils.
Motion.
Motion. Sir.
Second by Belton, how do you vote? Belton?
Yeah.
Reznoff?
Yeah.
Kova?
Yes.
Asher? Seventeen already. So, public forum?
I, I.
I'm just kidding. That's fine. That's fine.
So, um, I, I got a call after the last, uh, meeting, um, council member last brought up, uh, a concern with the, uh, fines on the property to be in mode, you know, and she said, well, why can't we just all help each other out? And a, a young man did call up and volunteered his services. Now, uh, the, the council's, I don't wanna make the impression that the council's, uh, backing him on this, but he volunteered his time. That's Mason Hasty. Uh, and he said it was okay for me to mention that, and I believe he's got his number up here at City Hall. And he said if anybody has any issues or needs their yard taken care of, that he was okay if they call up here and give his number. I mean, he'll make the decision if he's gonna do it or not.
That.
That's not gonna be sanctioned by us. I'm just saying he offered his.
Okay, that would have to be without a citation going through the city because you gotta have million dollar insurance to mow. That'd have to be totally on his own.
Yeah, it, that's, that's, that is the thing. I'm saying it's totally, that's why we're doing it here. He just threw it out there that he wanted people to know that it's, it's not backed by the city. It says, there's your information.
That's good. Thank you for.
So if anybody calls up City Hall, we are. Okay, you got some?
Um, yeah, so we talked, Matt had number seventeen up, but, um, you know, again, these rules for this black housing, affordable housing program, uh, I, can you put it on the agenda for Wednesday? Um, you know, I'll get this email from John if I need to. Uh, I guess I, I heard the same thing that you did, so. Uh, the only thing that's questionable is the local only contractor. How you can, you know, obligate somebody for that? I don't know, but.
Is there an email, Matt?
No, it was a conference call, but I guess I heard the same thing you did. He said it's a council discussion, that particular set of rules to be affordable housing. Correct, Ash? Did you not hear the same thing? Okay, so, you know, we used to do development agreements and blight houses to turn down and take away valuation from the community forever. And you've got people willing to put money into it. I mean, there's a stack of them right here that shows, you know, purchase price of fifteen thousand, the sale price of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I mean, this is a tried and true process, like the rules that he followed, the steps he follows. And if you guys wanna change them, fine, but something needs to be approved so, um, we can take that portion of our TIP funds, it's called LMI, and move it into a blight finding so it's flexible and easier to use.
And you said.
Versus LMI process, I mean.
You said this is one million, six hundred thousand dollars.
Something like that, yeah. Wallpark, yeah, that's, yes, that's where he's at, and that's the sale price.
And he's looking at possibly, he'd like to flip three every six months, but right now we gotta work with the different people and see if we can.
Yeah, and this doesn't tie the council to have to support one person. It puts a standard in place for the council. It's like what you'd put together for the committees. It gives you a process to follow so you know, uh, what you have at the end. I'll get an email from between now and Wednesday, I guess.
Um, I got something. So, uh, Matt handed us something here. Uh, I don't know.
I forgot to bring it up earlier.
Okay.
Uh, Matt House, Black Fund Development, requesting downtown housing grant. Um, he's not able to be here, but asking the city council to, for approval to work with Ash, uh, Matt House, and Carla Jennings, uh, Region Twelve, on a downtown housing grant application to review the, to review the city's participation, option for the Hotel Stewart building, and then bring to the December city council meeting the results of the meeting and/or an application for review and to determine at that time if the application should be submitted.
Then what's the city match on this?
This one here, there's, uh, the grant does require some city participation, but it does not indicate what percentage of that person, uh, participation should be.
And then how does, how does this affect the catalyst grant that he has already been awarded?
Uh, looking into that. He may be able to qualify for both.
I'm lying on this because he came up and he's. And, I mean, just from word of mouth.
It would happen.
What he has said, so.
I think Matt is doing the job.
No, he's doing a great job. I just.
No, I, specifically this question that you're asking because I have.
I see, so he's driving the city.
And I talked to Matt about that. I met his, sent him an email today. It was really a lot on the money that we need to take action.
So, so is the council okay telling Matt that he could reallocate those TIP funds for that catalyst grant towards his other one he wants?
I don't think he can. I'm trying to ask question.
No, 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 I'm saying you take, you don't do the catalyst grant. Guy pick, so what's the city on the hook for in that agreement with that catalyst grant?
That's to be with Zep logic.
I know, I understand. So, so he's applying for upstairs renovations in the old hotel versus, okay. So what's the city's TIP obligation?
I'm imagining.
Well, we need to apply for the catalyst grant. We had to provide a match in front of him.
I'm not committed to him.
I know we're not committed, but he said that we would match a certain amount. Okay, a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So that same hundred thousand of TIP money, if he wants to use that for matching funds for the other one, fine, but not anything addition to. So if you want those thousand of catalyst, you want the hundred thousand on the upstairs pick, but you can't have both because you haven't made any progress.
Well, his original upstairs project is now different from what he told us originally.
I mean, it's, it's too, it's too dynamic. There's nothing that's holding together, so.
Our work is mad on that. I think he's doing a good job communicating with him, and so let's, let's try to kinda keep going on communicating. And I think you and I talked about, uh, Christina, uh, concern. We've talked a lot about that.
I just, he's dragging the state, and every time I turn around, it seems like it's something different, and I just don't.
And he's had, he's had COVID to deal with, totally understand that, and, um, I get that. But when there's other folks that are, you know, maybe holding up matching funds, maybe allocating those matching funds, and so we tell somebody else that, you know, is going through a business transition that needs, um, I don't know what, help or segue or whatever, like we've been doing. We tell them no because if we plan on this expense and matching funds, it ties it up.
He comes to us and he says, I'm using this general contractor. That's what he told us. He came to us and he said he was using Jeff Marks as a general contractor.
Not talk to him.
No, nothing. That's where my concern is, is because I didn't even, I had forgot all about him, and then I saw Jeff and I said, I hear, and he's like, I don't have anything about it. So this guy is telling us all of these things and he's not following everyone, any of it.
Yeah, and so we'll throw him the bone of the COVID thing, that's fine, but, uh, not to have any more city expense tied into it. To me, it's.
I just hate to see Matt wasting his time when he's doing other things.
He got so much, he got so much.
But it's only one person that has time to have this grant.
Yeah.
So.
That's which one? The one he's got or the one to apply?
Both, actually. Yes.
The one he applied for, I'm glad that's already behind us.
He just have to face.
But that's the same grant, that's the same grant that's done for Tom Small and that we had to get back and reapply for.
Absolutely.
Matt is trying to explain that the one he's going to apply for goes to only one because we have two apply.
Right.
Wait, wait.
I thought there was one applying for it.
Yeah.
I've only been officially asked by Matt House.
So then that's who you go with?
But I thought the second one was moved because of other requirements were not matched.
Yeah, we don't have to talk about that because he's officially got some money. Okay, now, now we just need to have a motion.
You can do.
That's, no, that's, it's really cool. His item seventeen.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, he just was late to visit. So in item seventeen, we need a motion to approve that who was sitting with the grants.
Not to. And allow the city's TIP match to go towards either grant.
You can handle that.
Yeah, I think all of this will be reviewed and then we'll bring it back in December.
You're gonna have all those questions answered.
Just give him a motion to boost seat.
I made a motion.
Second. Second by Belton, how do you vote? Belton? Reznoff?
Yeah.
Kova?
Asher? Yep.
Well, he planned to come in December and kinda maybe help with some of these answers.
Okay, yes.
I mean, he's got stuff going. He's got a track record of making things work, so.
I can do this answer.
Yep.
Thank you.
Right down to the council?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Paper to sign.
That is not going to change.